2025 virtual meeting of the Anarondo County County is now in session. We are here for departmental budget presentations regarding the proposed FY26 budget for the council. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Madam Chair, Ms. Homer?
Present.
Ms. Fiedler is absent. Ms. Radman?
Present.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Present.
Legislative Council Meredith Beach?
Present.
And Acting County Auditor Brenda Cottrell.
Present.
Okay, um, do any of my colleagues have any questions before we begin? Don't see anything. Putting where I can see more of the faces, okay. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is the state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of procedure of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held in Annapolis as the county seat. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written comments from the public to be filed with a clerk and considered by the council, and now allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, and for all of the same reasons, it is not necessary to suspend the rules of procedure of the county council that apply to public participation and reasonable seating for the public or media or the location of council meetings. These rules have been deemed satisfied and do not need to be waived in order for this meeting to be held.
All right, we will begin our presentations with the Board of Elections. Please remember to introduce yourself when you speak and we will turn it over to Board of Elections. If they are there. Here he comes.
Hey, good morning. My name is David Garrus. I'm the Director of the Anarondo County Board of Elections. Uh, thank you for your time. Um, and also I would like to thank the council for its flexibility. Uh, we were originally scheduled to go on the fifteenth, uh, but you very graciously uh, moved us to the twentieth, so we really appreciate that. Um, I see Bo is, knows a panelist, do you want to start our discussion and then I'll add in details? Or do you just want me to go through it?
Yeah. Bo, if you'd let us know where we are?
Sure. Good morning. This is Bo Zhao from the Budget Office. The Board of Elections FY26 proposed budget can be found on page three forty-one of the budget book. Before turning back to David, I'd like to highlight a few major changes in their FY26 general fund budget. The personal services budget has increased by one point two million dollars. This is due to the reallocation of election officials pay from the contractual services object in the amount of nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. The state employee pay and benefits also increased due to turnover adjustment and a higher salary. However, the temporary pay and overtime has decreased by almost seven hundred thousand dollars due to the anticipated lower voter turnout. Contractual services has decreased by one point two million dollars due to the reallocation of election officials pay to personal service as mentioned above, as well as a decrease of the state board of election billing in the amount of about four hundred forty thousand dollars. Overall, the FY26 general fund budget has decreased by sixty thousand dollars. Uh, with that, I'm gonna go into turn back to David for his presentation.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. Um, so as always, the Board of Elections doesn't have any rain dates for Election Day. Um, our dates are set in stone. Uh, the legislature did recently change the date of the primary election. And the next fiscal year is going to fund uh, the primary on June twenty-third. Uh, originally was scheduled for June thirtieth, uh, so they moved it up a week. Uh, our office is a state office fully funded by the county. There are twenty-seven full-time employees and um, there's also a five-member board appointed by the governor. Uh, currently, since the governor is a Democrat, the board is three to two Democrats. Overall, in the county, we have uh, four hundred and seventeen thousand registered voters, so we're the fourth largest jurisdiction in the state of Maryland. Um, we've got a comfortable lead over Baltimore City now, so uh, we want to see more people register and continue to grow that. In terms of turnout, as uh, Bo mentioned uh, during his discussion, we are anticipating that the turnout for the primary election is going to be uh, low compared to our previous uh, elections, especially the most recent general election, which was a presidential general. Uh, so with the election being at the end of June, that's probably going to result in a lighter turnout for that election. And then, of course, uh, the next fiscal year, we will have the general election uh, in November. So for this coming budget, we are funding uh, nine election days. And um, right now, we're just preparing. This year's been about improving the physical security of the Board of Elections warehouse. To that end, I would like to thank the Anarondo County Police. They've been great partners, uh, in particular. All of our, uh, all of our partners in the emergency management, everybody, uh, everybody over there. It's been uh, great working with them and they've been just fantastic to uh, to help us. Uh, any questions?
Do I have any questions? Anyone? All right, that's kind of so essentially your budget is a wash, Mr. Garrus. Just shifting some things between categories, but stays about the same. So, well, thank you for all. Oh, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I um, didn't quite, uh, I was looking for my flag. Um, but I snide here. I was just curious, um, are there any sort of um, security issues that you had this last round of elections that are, you know, just worth mentioning that you've had to address?
In the presidential election after Election Day, we did have a bomb threat. Uh, that's the first time our office has ever had a bomb threat. Uh, we had to evacuate. That was a new, uh, that was a new experience, but like I said, the county police and the K-nine unit, they came out here right away. Um, they handled that. They handled that with professionalism and they're, they're, they were, they were fantastic. But to go along with that, like I said, that uh, that has spurred us to to close some of the gaps in our physical security here. Of course, we had the uh, our exterior cameras, but now we have more interior cameras, more door alarms. Uh, and we've added more of the ID card readers on our doors, interior doors, so now we're compartmenting the, compartmentalizing the building much more, but uh, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And stay safe.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, if there are no further questions, that's it for you this morning. Thank you so much. And we have a cat who's joined the scene. Ms. Ledbetter. We see your friend. That has joined in. All right, next we have Personnel. With Ms. Budowski and Mr. Teroux.
Good morning, Ann Budowski, Personnel Officer. Um, also joining from my staff today is Kelly Lovett, Assistant Personnel Officer for Pension, Health and Contracts and Senior Personnel Analyst, Tally Frentz for Budget and Contracts. Um, Stephen is going to point you to the right budget pages and walk you through a few highlights and then I will do cleanup.
Madam Chair, members of the council, Stephen Thru from the Budget Office, good morning. Uh, the Office of Personnel budget can be found on page one seventy-one of the proposed budget book. I'll give you a second off the turn there.
Stephen, go.
Uh, page one seventy-two uh, is the comparative statement of expenditures. This is going to show all the funds that fall under the Office of Personnel. You will note there are many more funds than there are budgets. That's because the Office of Personnel handles uh, several unbudgeted funds, including the pension fund, which obviously pays all of our retirees their pensions, um, and all four of our OPEB trusts. So that's for retiree health insurance. So besides that, they have a two-budgeted fund, the general fund and the health insurance fund. As you can see, the general fund goes up by three hundred and sixty-six thousand while the health insurance fund goes up by a little over six million. Uh, page one seventy-four uh, walks through the general fund. This is largely the day-to-day operations of the Office of Personnel on page one seventy-four. This increase is just under four percent or three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Most of their budget and most of this increase is related to personal services, a little over four percent, and that's really just the pay package. And a slight update to their contractual staff that does uh, background checks for uh, public safety investigations. Contractual services goes up a little over sixty thousand dollars or three percent. This is due to an uptick in the contract for pre-employment testing and a slight budget realignment for negotiation services. There's no questions. I'll go to page one seventy-five, which talks about the health insurance fund. This pays for health insurance for our active employees. Claims are really what drives the vast majority of this budget. You'll see that in personal services at a hundred and twenty-two million dollars. Claims are expected to go up a little over eight percent at eight and a half percent next year. Um, and there's a little, uh, about an increase of five and a half percent this year. So that highlights the major changes in the Office of Personnel's budget, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Budowski for her comments.
Um, thanks, Stephen. Um, as Stephen noted, our budget request this year is nine point eight million dollars and three quarters of that is for personnel costs. Um, we are nearly fully staffed. We currently have three vacancies, two of which are being in the recruitment process, sort of in the interviewing stages. Um, so we are almost completely fully staffed. Um, we do not have any supplemental requests or any really significant increases to our budget, but we continue to work hard every day for our county employees, our retirees, their families, um, and to provide the services to our fellow county departments as they kind of go through their recruitment phases. Um, and so I really just wanted to highlight some of the things that we do and have accomplished over the past year and kind of this year, kind of moving forward. Um, first, we awarded the um, new contracts for dental vision and life insurance um, that went into effect January first of twenty twenty-five. Um, and we have initiated an RFP that is going through its process for medical and pharmacy benefits that will take, uh, be implemented for January of twenty-six. We continue to enhance our ADP system, which is our HRAS system, where is the system that we do everything, right? It houses our records, it pays the employees and our retirees. It has our benefits platform for open enrollment, but we have continued to uh, expand and enhance those. Um, and so one of the things that we've done, uh, we've moved our benefits platform that everyone now was able to successfully complete their open enrollment process through last fall. So we're on a health and welfare's um, platform with ADP. We've updated our regular um, platform, just on our enterprise platform from an EV-five to EV-six, was just enhancements to the platform itself, which will leverage us to be able to do more enhancements as we move forward with the programs. And then we have, um, we are sort of in the middle of throes of e-time and time and leave accrual, so trying to get to the twenty-first century of uh, not paper time sheets. Um, and so we're doing electronic time sheets. We are rolling this out in pilot um, groups and have done that with smaller groups of the smaller departments first as we kind of roll out e-time. This is more like of a exception timekeeping process. Our public safety groups will probably not be impacted because they use telestaff and that is a little different than e-time. Um, and eventually, um, we will look to do add on onboarding module and some other things. Um, we continue to work with, and I think you heard from both my larger public safety groups about the things we're working together on our recruitment and how we continue to modify our process to keep more people in the line and and get more people to the table and in the application process. And then, um, the other highlight that I'd like to talk about is the Leadership Development Program that we created four or five years ago. We just graduated our fourth cohort of participants through that. These are all sort of mid and mid to mid uh, upper level uh, employees who are supervisors to give them skills to be better supervisors um, or to help them grow to be um, better leaders in our county, uh, maybe the next generation of our leaders. So we have graduated four classes. It's about a hundred folks um, of county employees and we will be kicking off um, the start of Cohort Five this summer. So I want, I would like to tout that program. Um, and lastly, um, probably the one that always interests people the most is negotiations. So for FY twenty-five, we did uh, successfully negotiate eleven contracts. Um, and of those eleven, we were able to get four two-year deals. So for FY twenty-six, we negotiated seven contracts. We have seven ratified agreements now with our unions. And of those seven, we were able also to get four more two-year deals, which is lovely. So next year we will be um, negotiating with seven bargaining groups. If you have any questions on the negotiations or my budget, I'm happy to take them up this time.
I have a question about the increase in claims. Is that increase due to an increase in the number of claims or the amount of the claims themselves? Are the healthcare costs going up or are more people um, accessing the healthcare?
Um, I don't have the exact details, but I can tell you it's probably a combination of both, right? So we are clearly paying more claims because either the claims themselves are more costly or it's because you, maybe your dependents or all the, you know, some family members or something have access to it.
Okay.
Yep. And the cost of health.
Yeah.
Cost of healthcare in general has gone up significantly. The doctors continue to, you know, uh, Etna, our medical vendor continues to negotiate contracts. They all have like three-year contracts with the different doctor groups and stuff like that. Those are all renegotiated. Coming out of COVID, I will tell you that the cost, labor cost for those doctors and the nurses in those groups are all going up. So it's really a combination of all of that.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, the last five years of actuals roughly is about a seven and a half percent increase. So eight and a half isn't much more, I would say, than kind of typical.
Sure. Thank you. Are there any other questions from council members? Anyone? All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you and all you do. Um, have a good morning.
All right, thank you.
So we will move on next. Ah, we get to put the man himself on the hot seat. It's time for the budget with Mr. Trumbauer.
Good morning, Council. I will let Budget Office or Budget Analyst Bo Zhao give the quick introduction, then I will entertain you for about thirty seconds.
Wow. Speed, who can do the shortest, shortest presentation? Who will be the winner? Bo, yes, what page are we on?
Good morning, uh, Bo Zhao from the Budget Office. Our budget can be found on page one sixty-five of the proposed budget book. I'm gonna turn back to, to Chris.
Thank you, Bo. Uh, I am Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I will present the budget, budget for you. And if you had me saying budget three times in the first ten seconds on your bingo card, you win. Usually I come before you and explain that there's nothing new in the Budget Office budget. This year, I can't do that because there is something new. So uh, we want to respectfully request from the council that you will approve our um, new position in the proposed budget. This is for an additional budget analyst. Um, we haven't added to the Budget Office staff for, I believe, uh, five or six years. This is a specific request that will cover two, uh, I think, very important needs. Number one, uh, as the council knows, we're undergoing a transition to a new financial management system. That new system will treat capital projects very differently. It will be, uh, I think, a much improved process in terms of the ability to analyze information and do all sorts of different analysis. But it's also going to be a more labor-intensive process that will require uh, an additional staff member to help support that. There will be a added benefit that we only right now have one full-time staffer assigned to capital budget and that is, of course, Naomi McAllister, who is extraordinary and great, but she is just one person. This will give us a second person to really dig into capital analysis, so I think that will have an indirect benefit of um, you know, putting a little bit more energy into that and having some uh, looking under the hood a little bit more and hopefully finding some um, uh, savings or efficiencies by having more uh, person hours devoted to looking at capital projects. So with that, uh, I will take any question and ask for your favorable support of our budget request.
Okay. There any questions? Yes, Ms. Ledbetter.
Button gets to me every time. Good morning, uh, Mr. Trumbauer. Thanks for being with us this morning. I just had a quick question. I was looking at the um, auditor's analysis and I see where she mentions that there is currently a vacancy um, for a Management Analyst Three. It looks like just since March. I'm thinking that that doesn't sound like that that is a um, well, hasn't been a long-term vacancy, but more of an acute vacancy. Would I be correct in making that assumption that?
Sure, so.
Been open forever. It's really just since March and you're in the process of trying to hire and?
Yeah, so uh, thanks for the question, council member. Um, as you know, we're a very small office, so including myself, we only have nine people. Um, we typically don't get a lot of turnover. Usually if someone leaves the Budget Office, they go to a department, right? Like we saw Darlene Flynn go to the fire department. We've seen some other migrations like that. Sam Chiriyako was a budget analyst for us. She lives in Charles County and had an amazing opportunity to go be the Chief of Budget at Charles County Government, so she took that. The timing was a little unfortunate because it was in March, which is right when we're gearing up to budget. So we actually acted very quickly. Uh, we were able to bring on a contractual uh, budget analyst uh, almost immediately to kind of fill that gap, because otherwise we'd have, you know, seven analysts doing the work of eight during the busiest time of the year. So we are actively recruiting uh, for that, that position vacancy is now being advertised. We have already had an overwhelming response to that, so I am very confident that that um, pin will be filled very shortly. So that is not a long-term vacancy.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure it was clear for, for the record, so I appreciate the information.
All right, any other questions for budget?
I will remind you, Madam Chair, that once you get done with me presenting the Budget Office budget, I do the finance non-departmental budget before.
Exactly. I was about to introduce you again to do the next department, Mr. Trumbauer, for finance non-departmental.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for the record, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I will be um, doing a page-turning exercise with you to go through finance non-departmental. As you recall, I like to refer to this as the Island of Misfit Toys. These are all the funds and things that really don't fit in anywhere else, so we kind of gllop them all into finance non-departmental. So you can find uh, this starting on page one forty-seven of your budget book. Uh, this is the overall comparative statement of expenditure, which lists all the different funds and characters of the Island of Misfit Toys. As you will see, uh, it's, if you look all the way down at the lower right, uh, the total is twenty-four point six million dollars less than last year. Um, there's a lot of things that go into that, but the biggest driver is that we have less PEGO uh, that we're deploying compared to last year. But I'll go through each of these really quickly. Uh, please jump in and stop me or wave your flag if, if you want me to stop and talk about it. Uh, so the first on page one forty-eight, this is the Permanent Public Improvement Fund. Uh, remember, this is just the PPI uh, that does the point one percent of the income tax. Uh, that was the two hundred fifty million dollars of bonds. Um, so you can see the appropriation in the last three years of the table there. That's just the debt service page, uh, payments on the PPI funds. We go to the next page, uh, one forty-nine. This is where we account for the pay-as-you-go or um, PEGO. And you can see it's a hundred thirty-seven point five million proposed in this budget. Uh, that is a decrease uh, from last year. The PEGO is generally a function of how much savings we have and how much we overachieve revenue and then we deploy those savings and revenue into the next year's budget, uh, mostly as PEGO and the capital, but on other one-time costs as well. Uh, page one fifty uh, gives you the detail for the county's tax increment districts. Uh, we call these TIFs. We have uh, eight or nine or so in the county and you can see the accounting of those is in the budget summary table at the top right of that page. Uh, the only real noteworthy one here is that the, the Odenton Town Center is very active, so we are appropriating money from that TIF into the uh, TOD parking garage project in, in the capital budget. So that is um, five million uh, this year. But uh, most of the other ones go up or down a little bit, uh, depending on um, the accounting that we do each year. Next page, one fifty-one. This is special tax districts. Just remember, this is different than the SCBDs, of which we had a fun conversation around last night. So uh, no big changes here, except to remind you that the Farmington Special Tax District is now closed. So you see a zero in the FY twenty-six budget there. Every other, uh, each of the other ones uh, gets a little bit of appropriation uh, based on the assessment that, that Munich Cap does for us each year. Page one fifty-two, uh, this is just the um, debt service overall and you can see the breakdown below the table between uh, the General County Projects, the Board of Ed, the Community College and our uh, public golf courses. So it's down a little bit from compared to last year. Page one fifty-three, this is mandated grants. So there's a couple of things going on here. Um, the perennial one is that we have these grants to the city of Annapolis based on their share of the sales tax revenue and the nine-one-one trust fund that we basically, you know, appropriate back to the city. But then this is also where we're showing this year those state budget cost shifts that were uh, forced down to the county. So this is the um, ESTAT or the State Department of Assessment and Taxation Costs. Uh, this is the teacher retirements, the community college employee retirements, and then the private pre-K payments. So all that told together is about twelve point two million dollars. Those are additional um, state costs that we did not have last year. Page one fifty-four is our contribution to the Parking Garage Fund. This is super exciting. It's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars every year. No change this year. Next page. To the um, IPA Fund, which is the installment purchase agreement. These are basically for real property easements for farmland and other open space. Um, so you can see that this year it's down just a tad to seven hundred thirty-five thousand. There will be another uh, IPA for the debt service a little bit later. Page one fifty-six is the Self-Inurance Fund, so you can see the breakdown of the different components uh, below the budget summary table. Um, it just shows you the Board of Ed, Community College and all the other units. This is just where um, we administer the self-insurance program. Next page, we're on one fifty-seven. This is the contribution to the Revenue Reserve or Rainy Day Fund, as it's referred to. So uh, we have a policy of maxing that out. This year, that will take an additional four million dollars. Um, that will get us to the maximum of eight percent of operating revenues, which is estimated to be one hundred seventy-eight point eight million. Um, the reason it's a little bit less than last year, we're also accounting for uh, the investment income that we earn on this. So interest rates are high. That helps us because if we earn a bunch of interest, that stays in the fund and then we have to put less new money in every year to, to reach that max. Page one fifty-eight, this is just our contribution to the retiree health insurance. You heard um, Ann Budowski and Stephen Teroux talk about the OPEB fund when they presented the Personnel Budget to you. Just a reminder that the um, year-over-year is actually going down because we got a very favorable valuation from our actuary this year, which is a good one. Next page, fifty-nine, this is the contribution to the Community Development Fund. It's again just stable each year, seventy thousand dollars. And then page one sixty, a couple of minutes ago, I reminded you'd see the debt service end of the IPA Fund. Look, here it is. Just showing you the debt service side of that. And then home stretch here, just a couple more. Um, page one sixty-one is Development Impact Fees. Uh, this is where we account for all the school yeah, impact fees, school and highway impact fees, and they're broken down by districts. Just again, keep in mind that the impact fee districts are different than the council manic districts. It's always been a little confusing. Some of us think that they should change the nomenclature, so maybe the districts are like alphanumeric or something, so they don't get confused with you, but that's for another conversation. Um, page one sixty-two is the Video Lottery Impact Aid uh, Summary Table. And then if you flip the page to one sixty-three, this is showing you all the individual appropriations uh, that are in. And then if you flip the page to one sixty-three, this is showing you all the individual appropriations, uh, that are in the, um, VLT, uh, spending plan. And then we have our very last page, page one sixty-four. This is showing you the trans- the, uh, contribution to other funds. This is just transfers between, uh, the general funds and other funds accounted here in the budget summary table. That was super fun. I hope you enjoyed it as much as I do. If you have any questions, I will certainly do my best to answer them.
All right. So, Mr. Trumpbauer, when we talked about the ten million dollar contingency fund that we've set up.
Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, so that is, that is essentially unbudgeted reserve. So, um, that is, uh, one-time funds that we didn't appropriate into anything else, and so that remains available. Um, in order, so the county executive in his budget address, and then in my budget officer presentation to you all, we explained that that is being held in reserve to potentially mitigate, um, any impacts from federal grants that the county may have been counting on, but given the new presidential administration having different policies, we may not receive as the full funding or may not get the grant at all. So there's ten million dollars that's kind of unbudgeted, that's held in reserve. That is able to be used to backfill any critical grants that, uh, the county as a whole feels like it may want to continue doing the work that that grant funding would have funded. Uh, I do want to explain that the county has set up, uh, similar to how we did for the, um, uh, ARP funds. We have a work group of, um, folks that are reviewing federal grants and working on a rubric to decide if there are grants that don't come in, if we will propose, uh, to backfill any funding. The important thing to remember is that ten million dollar reserve, uh, can only be appropriated, uh, through legislation. So you all would get, the council would get an appropriation bill, um, to, you know, i- in front of you in order to deploy any of the, the funds. And in the event that we get all the way through the next year, fiscal twenty-six, if some or all of those funds are still available, they would just fall back to general fund balance and be available for the FY twenty-seven budget to be deployed in some fashion.
And are they included in this non-departmental budget area?
The, the ten million dollars?
Yes.
So that, so this shows, um, appropriations, and because we're not appropriating, you w- you won't find a line item in the budget, ten million. It's, it's essentially the difference between what our, uh, total revenue is and what our total expenditures is. So there's a ten million dollar difference. Uh, we're, we're basically expending or appropriating ten million dollars less than the overall revenue because we're holding that ten million in reserve for this federal grant contingency. Did I explain that well enough?
That's, I think so. Trying to.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
If, if I may, Mr. Trumpbauer, uh, are there other jurisdictions who have done set-asides?
Um, I am not able to answer that. I know that other, I know that other jurisdictions have had conversations about the same general issue of what happens if critical federal grants don't materialize, but I haven't looked around enough to tell you whether other jurisdictions have held money in reserve the way we are, but that is something I can look into for you guys. Um, certainly, we could talk to Mako, or I can make some calls.
Yeah, the, the, uh, the permit, because do we know how the, where the ten came from? Like, why ten million?
So, um, basically, uh, and again, I can point you back to my original budget officer presentation on May first, but we have a certain amount of one-time funding available based on previous fund balance over, um, achievement of revenue and under, uh, expenditures on the appropriation side, right? So that's a total sum of one-time money. We program the major- the vast majority of that into the capital PGO. Uh, in conversations with the administration, uh, the county executive was very concerned about the potential impact of the federal grant situation. He spoke about it in his budget address. So collaboratively, we came up with the idea of making sure that, um, we could meet our needs in the capital budget and the other departmental one-time requests while holding some amount in reserve, and it just kind of materialized that, that we could do that with ten million. So it's not a magic number. It's a very round number. Um, you know, if it was nine point eight-three, I would probably explain exactly why it's that. But, uh, this was just a, a level that was commensurate with what we, with what the county executive wanted to have available in order to backfill, uh, critical federal grants.
Good. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Um, and, but, Mr. Trumpbauer, moving forward, I do have a question. So if, for instance, we've, we are seeing a greater impact um, from federal grants being frozen or not awarded or something, we would have the ability to perhaps transfer more money to this fund to be used.
S- so, um, great question, Madam Chair. So you wouldn't, this, so there is no fund where this money lives, right? So, so this, this money lives in reserve because it's, it's essentially revenue that's not appropriated. So in a way, you can think of it as a surplus, but it's, it's one-time money. It's not recurring, so it's not a structural surplus, okay? So that, so that surplus can be added to, let's, let's say, for example, we get through half the year and we've brought you enough appropriation bills that you have approv- approved that were, we've expended all ten million. If there were future needs that the county executive and the county council felt that they needed to apply more money to, we would have the ability to, two options really. We could, we could realize at the time if there was new, um, unappropriated fund balance because the, uh, ACTFOR or the Annual Certified Financial Report was closed and we had new fund balance. We could then appropriate some of that, or we could use funding from the CAO contingency fund. That's recurring, but we could still deploy it, just like we use it for snow removal and other costs. Um, so in a scen- in a scenario where there's a greater need than this ten million dollars, the council would have options as, as long as there is additional fund balance that materializes between now and then. I have no rea- that's been the case as far back as I can look. I have no reason to believe that would not be the case in the upcoming year.
Okay. Thank you. So, Ms. Rodden, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Ms. Ledbetter?
You, you asked the question that I was going to ask.
Oh, okay. Ms. Ledbetter, did you?
Uh, yes, thank you. I just, I, Mr. Smith pretty much asked the question that I was wondering about too, but I, I want to make sure I a hundred percent understood your answer, Mr. Trumpbauer. So there, the ten million is not necessarily a sum of a list of particular grants, knowing grant A is worth this many dollars, grant B is worth that many dollars, and then you came to a sum of ten million. It's more of a approximation of what might be needed. It, would that be a, a fair, am I understanding properly? I just want to make sure I, I come out of this with a clear understanding and don't.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, the, the ten million dollars was an approximation based on the overall universe of federal grants from the most recent year we could look at, which was, um, you know, I sent you guys a memo at the beginning of the year, maybe thirty-three, thirty-four million, right? And then conversations with several departments that depend on a lot of federal grants, right? ACDS was, was certainly one, our, uh, Health Department was, was another. Where, you know, w- we looked at, wh- what do you see looking forward? What do you think is, um, is potentially threatened? And so we kind of settled on ten million. But again, um, I can't give you a list of, here's what adds up to ten. It was more of a, let's, let's find an appropriate number that would give us the ability to, um, you know, to keep programs going if things don't materialize. And that's, that's why we refer to, refer to it as kind of a federal grant contingency. It's, it's just like the CAO grant, the CAO Office Contingency Fund that pays for snow removal and does the fourth quarter transfer appropriations and things like that. Um, you know, it's kind of a combination of what we project the need may be and what our budget is giving us in terms of availability, right? So it's not an exact science, but it's budgeting science.
Fair enough. Thank you for making sure I understood that perfectly. I appreciate it.
All right. If there are no further questions, thank you, Mr. Trumpbauer.
Always a pleasure. Good luck with the rest of your deliberations.
Yes, and we will move on to Finance with, um, Ms. Penley and, um, Mr. Zhao is back with us. And still waiting for Ms. Penley to join us.
Excuse the delay, Madam Chair. It seems that, oh, here they come. Sorry. They're all in a room together. We did test it earlier.
Okay. Good morning.
Ms. Penley, I've asked the control of the lower-level green room to unmute. If you could unmute.
Hey. All right.
Sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry about that. Uh, good morning, uh, Madam Chair Hummer and members of the County Council. For the record, my name is Billy Penley. I am the Controller for the Office of Finance. I first would like to start in- with an introduction of my key staff members. Many of them have worked with my staff, you and your staff members, helping the constituents and customers for Anaroni County. On my far left is Alabra Nguyen. She is our Finance System Analyst for our utility billing, property tax billing, personal property, cashiers, sales tax, and use, tax sale. She helps us internally and externally when a customer has a problem. For example, when they're going to look up their account online or with auto pay. To my immediate left is Laura Brinsell. She is the Financial System Operations Manager. She oversees the, all of the, uh, tax billing, utility billing, um, personal property, tax sale, bankruptcy, cashiers, customer service, and et cetera. To my right, immediate right, is Brian Shank. He is my manager of financial services. Um, in finance, he assists me with legislation, budget, um, AMIS reporting, ARC reporting, ambulance billing, and he's also our expert to property taxes because he was just promoted from that area. To my far right is Ms. Eddie Calicoli. She is the Assistant Controller for Finance, and she oversees accounts payable, cash and debt management, investments, capital projects, grants, fixed assets, and everything else that falls under that umbrella. I would like to first turn you, we have a presentation, so with the page I'm turning you to and the proposed, um, current expense budget manual will be up on your screen, so you can either look in your budget manual or up on the screen, and I will highlight our FY twenty-six budget. Can you see our screen?
Yes, we can.
Super. Thank you. All right. On page one forty-one of the county's proposed budget book, um, is the overall picture for the Office of Finance's FY twenty-six proposed budget. This request is thirteen point six million dollars. Overall, the request is eight hundred and nineteen thousand or six point four-two percent more than our FY twenty-five budget. The increase in our FY twenty-six budget is primarily attributed to pay packages and to new positions, along with postage increases. But these increases are offset with savings for our ambulance billing contract that we were able to negotiate a new contract and have a better rate structure. So I'm now turning to the next page, page nine. To give a highlights for this section of Finance, this is the Accounting Control. The Assistant Controller, Eddie, oversees this area. So again, this is accounts payable, cash and debt, bond sale, fixed assets, financial reporting, ambulance fee administration, and also our annual comprehensive financial report, reporting out there. And this budget is where we see the increases primarily for the FY twenty-six proposed budget. I have two new positions. One is a Finance System Analyst position. Um, this position will assist users for the financial system. We're in, currently in the process of upgrading our financial system, and this person will be the one to troubleshoot going forward, uh, implement, uh, upgrades, assist users, provide training, conduct further analysis for enhancements of the financial system, and will also be assisting other departments. So Finance is a key role in this financial system because everything essentially comes through us on its journey through the financial world. This position will be replacing eventually, uh, a contractual position that the county has had for over twenty years with the current version of our system software. The next position is a Grant Manager. So in our section here, we have a Grant Unit. But this position that's new in the Finances budget is coming from the CAO's budget, so is essentially to the General Fund, a budget neutral thing, but it decreased that budget, increased our budget by that light amount, like amount. Uh, this position will comple- complement our current roles with grant reporting. Currently, we're on the financial reporting end, so this position is on the front end of grants, helping solicit, apply, monitor, for example, what's going on in the federal government with grants and issues there, and work with the federal government on any issues we may have with reportings. Um, we did recognize a decrease of savings in this budget through our ambulance fee administration, so the county has a vendor that does all the ambulance billing, um, and add a certain percent of what they collect. So in this new contract, the, uh, percent went down, so we have better rates. So the cost to us will be less going forward. I just want to share that this is a revenue generating program, the ambulance fees, the revenue is in the fire department. We carry the expense. But overall, we're one big happy family in the General Fund. So when this program first was implemented in two thousand nine, they collected approximately one point four million. So from two thousand nine through two thousand twenty-four, this program has collected for the General Fund one hundred ninety-three point nine million. Definitely demonstrates, you know, the cost for this ambulance billing to have these expenses to do that. On the next page, which is page one forty-four of your budget book, this is my billings and customer service section. They're on the front lines. Unfortunately, people don't call to say, "Thank you for my bill." They call to say, "Well, why didn't I get my bill? Why is my water bill so high? Why didn't I get this property tax credit? Um, my water's been turned off today. What do I do? Where do I go? How do I get it turned back on?" Um, so this unit is a busy unit. They also have three cashier sections, um, recreation and tracks, customer service, utility billing, property tax, and personal taxes are the primary areas. This year, the increases are related to pay package, but the other increase is something that has been increasing over the years is postage. So we have to mail all the property tax bills, utility bills, delinquent bills, um, duplicate bills, et cetera. So there was a postage increase in July two thousand twenty-four, so this budget is making up for that increase because we budget based on historical experience. Um, we are anticipating an ex- uh, increase on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five of approximately five sets. We will be monitoring our expenses to ensure that we have it covered for the FY twenty-six budget. We appreciate your support. Uh, we are here to answer any questions you may have. Um, thank you from the Office of Finance, where everyone counts.
All right. Um, I, I have a question on the Grants position. So you said this is going to be monitoring all the grants from the counties. That means from every department, every kind of grant that we're having? Well?
Right. So this position currently has already set up a grants work group with the department, so they have regular meetings on updates, processes, training, um, et cetera. They also have, um, a virtual open house for the departments to reach out to the team for assistance with their grants. Um, that way, having that position in the Office of Finance aligns all the roles of grant management.
Um, and your new, two new positions, from what I understand, these aren't really, um, ness- that, this is a transfer of fundings, not necessarily new fundings, that one position is moving from contractual to permanent, and one is just being transferred from another department. That's correct?
That's correct. The contractual one. That's correct. The contractual one, as soon as we get, go live in the new version for our financial system, that will go away. But then we will have our position internally going forward and have, you know, ownership and documentation, et cetera, internal to assist the users countywide.
All right. So are there any other questions? I'm trying to see everyone. Anyone? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Penley. We appreciate it. Thank you for all the work your team does.
Thank you. Happy to help.
Our next department is the Office of Information Technology. Mr. Martin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Budget Office. You can find OIT's budget on page 178 of your proposed budget book. An alternative Jack.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. I'm Jack Martin from Office of Information Technology. With me today is Mr. Mike Tarquinho. He's my deputy. And Kay Hoffman, probably all know Kay Hoffman. She's our lead admin. She heads up the admin team, which is so crucial as part of IT. I'll start in a quick presentation. And I may, let's see, share. Okay. Everybody see that? Yeah. Okay, great. So there's a lot of information here. Feel free to ask any questions. Mostly, I'll be going over the highlighted text just so we proceed through this as quickly as we need to. So OIT mission is the same as it's been. I really try to focus on a couple of things with our team. One is bringing the right tools and technologies to wherever somebody is. We have a lot of mobile employees, a lot of people who are out there in the field. I talk about that a few times in this presentation. The reason is it's really important because we, it means that our workforce is out there with the constituents and we need to bring them the tools and capabilities where they are. So in a mobile format. And that we have the right people serving those customers. So they've got to be driven. They need to understand what the services are and they need to be capable. In terms of trends affecting IT, I cover these mostly because there's a lot of things in the news. Some of them affect us, some of them don't. But I talk a little bit about mobile here. Also, still providing that single view for council of all IT activity. We're still able to do that at this county. We haven't outgrown that like the larger counties in Maryland. I think there's some benefits to that. We won't, we won't always have that in Anaronda, but we have that today. Also, we're working on transition from standalone applications to a focus on platforms. And that's a really part of us maturing our organization. Platforms bring a lot of capabilities. There's some pros and cons to platforms. But their benefits are really end-to-end services, better reporting, better security. I can go into more details on that, but it's a, it's a much larger discussion. Anyway, that is a focus of our team. Also underway, our CAD and financial systems projects are requiring a lot of resources. We do request backfill resources in, in our budget to help cover those needs because we have people who are already doing a couple of jobs and we need them really focused on the success of these large projects. Here's our IT organization, largely the same and very similar to most IT organizations. No real surprise, but right down. I highlighted a couple of areas at the bottom that have changed in the past year. I wanted to let you know about. We have put the project management office and our PC tech support teams together. And that is to combine our customer-facing teams because they often spend a lot of time working with our customers, providing services so that we can help have as really good conversations and communication within that team. And so that we can bring together their needs and understand what our customer needs are better. Also, they cover the help desk and all the technical support for refresh, including AV equipment. And down in the security, you'll probably recall last year, we requested a CISO, Chief of Information Security Officer. And that was granted. We filled that position in November. And so we have a new CISO heading up cyber security program here at the county, which is very beneficial. And that is standard for counties of our size. So things driving us and industry trends, of course, a lot of SaaS and PaaS, it's a software as a service and platform as a service. They're very similar. The platform means you can put whatever your software of choice is onto that platform, such as Amazon Web Services. Software as a service, the new Oracle project is an example of us utilizing software as a service. So there we are. We're purchasing, really renting or leasing software in, in a cloud from a cloud provider and having it configured so it works as well as possible for us. Again, covering cybersecurity, consumer technology, of course, drives expectations. I talked about mobile and we do have technology cost inflation affecting our budget. And we also as part of, you know, tied to platforms, we are really working to empower departments to focus on business rather than technology. So that's our ultimate goal is to make it so that the technology use is seamless or so that people really don't have to think too much about what the technology is. It quote unquote just works for them. So that's really our focus. It's, it's an advanced type of approach, but we are working towards that every day. Also, we have a small program utilizing AI. We have AI capabilities available to county employees through Google and their product called Gemini. And we have a program where people can request access to that and utilize that for day-to-day things such as, you know, drafting an email or a document of some sort. But we have some, some developers using it in a much more advanced manner to help us respond to constituent requests. To, it actually gathers the constituent information, well, the specific need, helps prioritize it and helps summarize what the request is. Over in our priority highlights, if we're talking about what is going on this year, this fiscal year, we have a very exciting year with the financial, both the financial system project is underway as well as the CAD project, which is in scoping. So it's, it's basically underway. We do have some projects we're taking on with the aging and disabilities for nutrition support. A lot of work in the Wreck and Parks areas, childcare and team sports. We're building a new portal to serve those customers well. And in the Land Use Navigator, which you hear a lot about, we have three projects currently going on with right-of-way permits. That's been implemented. That's going very well. E-plan review. So we are looking at bringing in electronic plan review for the teams to help. Again, it's, it's a form of communication really to allow markup of plans, have it going back and forth between developers, people in the public and the in-house employees so that there is no information lost when it's transferring back and forth about a planned project. That should be very helpful. We also are working on replacing the major subdivision tracking database, which I'll just say has a little long in the tooth. So it is time to do that and we're very excited about that project. We have some licensing enhancements going on as well. So a lot going on in the Loon area. Also, the ADP project, which you heard personnel talk about a little bit earlier, and it's pretty exciting work. We work with them to help them be successful. And E-time is going to bring us forward in 20 years. So it'll be very exciting. There's a nice mobile phone app that goes along with that that'll help the users that are using E-time. These are our four areas of focus. So we bring all our projects into these areas. Cloud application backbone, which is really how do we, how do we have fast connectivity to the cloud? And that's with fiber directly over to Northern Virginia, Ashburn specifically. That brings us to where all of the all of the cloud centers are. Public safety, which of course has been a huge focus for us for about 20 years when we implemented the PCs, tough books in police cars about 20 years ago, working with the police to do that and have continued today all the way through the Arctic project. Constituent-centric services, including such things I talked about a minute ago with Apricot and Wreck and Park projects, but also PEG broadcast and fiber connections to senior centers for faster connection there. And then securing the enterprise. As mentioned, we brought in a new CISO to lead the cybersecurity programs. And security is always first and foremost in our mind. So in terms of budget highlights for our next year of FY26, we have projects successfully moving from, in the operating side, we have projects successfully moving from capital to operating, which is why you see an increase there. A lot of that comes from projects moving from, from the capital side to the operating side. So there's, we, we see that as really good. It means the project was successful, but it does increase our operating costs. But ultimately, it's a good thing. It means that we're bringing these on for our users and for constituents if it has an external capability. We've also had inflation affect the cost of software and increase in personnel costs. We have two new proposed positions that you saw in our budget request. So let me talk briefly about those. One is Senior Project Manager to support public safety. We're adding that to our existing PMO group. So the person will have a structure to work within. But it will largely support the police department and the Arctic project, which is growing rapidly. The other request is for a reclass of an ISSS to SP2 to support cybersecurity. So this person will be doing event monitoring, vulnerability prioritization, and security reviews for us. So that's what that request is. In terms of software, we continue to incorporate needs and capabilities into modules utilized by departments. And again, we have a platform focus going forward. Before I jump into capital, are there any questions on operating? Okay.
Oh wait, hold on, hold on, Mr. Martin. Let me see if I see anyone. Any council members have a question? I do want to ask, moving back to your positions.
Sure.
The budget, the auditor's analysis says that y'all currently have 12 vacant positions. Could you give us some background on those, on the status of those or how long some of those, are these recent vacancies or some of them, these been vacant for a while?
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity to talk about that. So when I came, when I took this position two years ago, I proceeded to do a full analysis of our positions, both those that are being utilized and those that are vacant. And what I find is that what I, what I don't want to do is just jump and hire for an existing perceived need. Really take a strategic, I've really taken a strategic look with the team at what our long-term needs are. And I can give you a few examples of that. So one example would be the person that we, the position that we hired to fill the need of the conference room technology. So that, that took some time to figure out. We didn't ask for a new position. We reallocated an existing position to do that. We went out and recruited. We, and we got that individual. And it's, we've been very successful with that. And so of the existing positions, I don't have all the specifics on them, but they are allocated to four different areas. They're all very crucial for us. And let me run through those right now. So one is an applications group under, actually under Mr. Tarquinho. So in there, we are building that up to handle new capabilities and requests brought on by these large platforms that we're investing in, which are great investments for the county, but they don't take care of themselves. And this is really the case across the board. We have literally tens of thousands of assets of all different types, tens of thousands. And nothing we buy is set it and forget it, meaning nothing that we buy, we can just put in place and it'll run. Everything we have has a contract for support and needs people who know what they're doing with it, have these capabilities, technical capabilities, and they can handle those and either fix or replace equipment. So I mean, that's just the business we're in. I'm not, I mean, it's a good business to be in. We're happy to do it, but we do need support to do that. Another area that is the server team, we have a couple of people allocated to that. And what we've been doing is writing up the job descriptions to fit the needs that we have. It does take some time. But we've been reallocating people across, from the server team, both in public to focus on public safety areas as well as our changing technologies in AWS, meaning the cloud platforms, as well as on-premise. A third area we have, which is really crucial, is security. And so you'll see allocated one position there. We will be allocating another position of the open positions to that as well. And then the fourth area is Oracle. So right now, we're involved in a very large Oracle project. And there are kind of, when you, when you take a project like this, it's pretty common where you have your, the needs for the project implementation. And then the sustaining organization to, to manage a piece of software like that is a little bit different than the ones to build and implement it. So we're really looking at and watching where that project goes and figuring out what it is that we need for the sustaining organization for Oracle. And we know that it's probably not the same skills that we utilize for today's 25-year-old financial system. So those are the four areas. That's our plan. We do have a plan and we are following it and happy to answer any more questions on that.
I would just like to add to Jack's answer regarding the vacancies. They were actually carrying a lot more vacancies than they currently are with Jack's predecessor. One of the biggest impacts to the IT budget this year is actually a turnover adjustment, which we needed to make because Jack's team has actually filled a number of those vacancies. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay. And Ms. Martin, now that we have you, I'm going to ask the big question. So after our cyber attack from February, what of these budget requests, if any, are going to be going toward, you know, enhanced, I know you've brought up some of the security things, but what, when y'all look strategically at what happened, what in the budget might reflect some changes moving forward based on what, what we've experienced there?
So we don't talk about IT, our cybersecurity specifics in a public meeting, but happy to talk about anywhere you see security that is bolstering that organization. I'm happy to say that we have a plan and we're working towards it. So the, the budget that you're seeing is the same from last late fall. So this is the same request we've made because we're working towards that plan. These things are on our list. We may have accelerated a few. But they're, they're on, they're in our plan and we are implementing them and working towards this all the time. But we're happy to have a smaller, smaller group meeting with you on specifics in that area, if you like.
Certainly. And don't mean to imply at all that y'all are not focused on security, but I do think the public is wanting to, you know, will want to hear that, that everything is ongoing to have that. And we certainly don't want specific shares to give any openings, but to know that that's at the forefront.
Absolutely is, always is. As you can see in our Absolutely is, al- always is, uh, as you can see in our four uh, priority areas that we put together for last year's slideshow. Uh, security was there, we requested the position for the um, SISO, filled that position, so we are. It's absolutely first and foremost on our mind. Uh, if we don't have security, we don't have anything, so.
Correct, correct, so, alright, are there any other council questions on the operating budget? Not seeing any hands. Alright, please move on to capital.
Thank you. So over on the capital side, uh, we have four large projects uh, currently requiring the, the bulk of our capital funding. Uh, from a project standpoint, the CAD, the Loon, uh, ADP upgrades as well, of course. Uh, financial system upgrade, which is uh, sometimes I refer to that as the Oracle project, but. Uh, so we have a lot going on there. Uh, we are continuing our work with Arctic, uh, the radio system. And uh, Axon, so Axon's not just uh, body cameras anymore, they're in a number of areas. Uh, and we're involved with public safety in all those areas, uh, trying to bring uh, the standards, standard use uh, and. Uh, working with purchasing to help bring those capabilities to public safety. Uh, so new this year, a couple of things, uh, Greenberry Point Towers and E-Rate work with ACPS. So with the Greenberry Point Towers, we will be going out for bids, um, and. So to either uh, take two of the towers down, uh, or do maintenance on them. So when we bought the towers from the Navy. Uh, for a few bucks, I think, uh, from twenty-three years ago or something. Uh, we, we agreed to uh, keep them well-maintained or take them down. So in order to live up to that agreement, we need to uh, go out to bid, it's, it's kind of a. Well, I'll just say it's not an IT, it's not a technical decision whether to keep them up or take them down. Uh, it's likely less expensive to take two of them down, we will leave the one up. These are very, very, very big towers, six hundred feet, uh, our typical radio project tower is between two and three hundred feet. Uh, the other, you know, the other ones across the county, I think, we have, we have twenty-one other towers across the county, this is, these are very, very big towers. Uh, it will take uh, a careful uh, exercise to work with these. Uh, but we are prepared to go out to bid uh, and get prices to work with those. Uh, as is, as we're requested to do. Uh, also E-Rate program, we're working with ACPS. Uh, their E-Rate uh, needed to be rebid, they, they built that um, RFB. And we responded to it and we were uh, the successful bidders for that, so we will be working forward. Uh, there's a, there's a request in our budget for money uh, to build out. This, to the new specification that the school system uh, has put into their project uh, that we bid on. So, uh, that's a one-time cost, I can talk a little bit about, a little bit more about it in a minute, but anyway. That is that uh, we were the successful bidder with uh, ACPS and there's a lot of benefits. Uh, to us working with A, ACPS uh, providing these capabilities. Also, we're working uh, closely with the Health Department to standardize uh, PC hardware ordering and um, software image deployment. So the Health Department does utilize our network, so we want to standardize all the PCs on their side as well. Uh, to make sure that we have the same base pieces of software and can ensure uh, security uh, across the enterprise. This uh, is a new project for us and I really appreciate the Health Department working with us on this, as well as the Budget Office. Was uh, it was, you know, Chris who really spearheaded this, so thank you, I think it's a great idea and it will help us. Uh, as I, as it says, standardize uh, what we're doing both on our side and the Health Department's side. We do have new uh, seller phase in projects, which I mentioned briefly uh, previously, we have three projects underway. Uh, there is a detention system upgrade, which is uh, starting uh, shortly here. Uh, MUNA systems upgrades, we're working with finance very closely on. Uh, and we do have uh, so we are utilized, planning to utilize the carryover. Uh, for these large projects and provide, so uh, providing backfill supports of people. Uh, not just in IT, but also people who support the Finance Department uh, as well as potentially purchasing. So here's our seven projects, uh, it's the overview, uh, C-five-one-nine-six-hundred is the largest. Uh, that's our capital uh, information technology enhancement capital project, uh, then the cable TV peg. Uh, the fiber network funding, uh, public safety radio system uh, upgrade, so. Uh, that project was successfully implemented about six months ago, we do have additional work to do. Uh, because at the end of the contract, uh, we had negotiated terms. We're to bring all of the hardware and software up to the latest specification uh, from the provider, which is Motorola. That's a good thing for the county, since it was a seven-year project, we don't want seven-year-old technology sitting around on our brand-new project we just implemented. So there is a good deal of work uh, putting that in place, as well as we're changing the power uh, in all the uh, tower shelters. From AC to DC, DC's easier on the equipment, uh, and you get a better lifespan from it. Most of the new equipment came in DC, we have those shelters powered for both, we are moving everything to just DC. Um, the Greenberry Point Towers, which I mentioned, um. Public Safety Technology Enhancement, which we think of as mostly the field-oriented uh, technology for our public safety groups. Uh, and uh, the E-Rate project, which I talked briefly about. Okay, here's some detail on the C-five-one-nine-six-hundred uh, category, um, project. With our sub-projects across the enterprise, we really have covering all of our areas uh, in IT. From uh, corporate infrastructure, meaning uh, backend infrastructure, what does it take to run, you know, government processes? Um, public safety enterprise, uh, such as central services, the financial system. Um, network, security, uh, I have asterisks there just because we've split that out, we've always had security, it just used to be under network. So now I'm splitting it out as a separate item, uh, and we do have some specific requests in there. Um, to your point, uh, Councilwoman Hummer, uh, and land use. And Health and Human Services, uh, which is largely uh, revolving around ADP, um, Viewworks. Uh, which is um, utilized by uh, DPW. Wreckin Parks, uh, as well as Central Services. Um, and the Aging and Disabilities Nutrition Program, which I mentioned. Uh, here are the rest of our projects that uh, our capital project requests, which uh, basically are not. C-five-one-nine-six-hundred, with cable TV, fiber network, radio system upgrade. Um, public safety technology enhancements, um. Greenberry Point uh, and uh, E-Rate. Any questions?
Um, I have a question on the Greenberry Point, could you explain again, so there's three towers, we're only using one.
Right, so what do we do with the other two is the question, and we need to answer that this year? Uh, and, and then, you know, and then implement that, whatever that answer is. Either way, the towers, the two, uh, all three towers, the, the, the one that we utilize has been maintained quite well. But the other two either need maintenance or need to be uh, removed.
Do, when you say either need maintenance, I mean, does it appear that we would need to use them? Do we have a use, do we have a need for them or are they obsolete or redundant?
We've been working uh, with that one tower for over twenty years, we have no need for the other two. Uh, it was just a package deal when we eventually got it. Uh, and so we kinda had to take all three, even though we only wanted one, there are costs. Even just like maintaining the lights on the top of all three, I mean.
Sure.
You know, that light has to be on day and night, when it goes out, it's a special project to get that replaced. Uh, you know, it's the, really the paint, at this point, the bases would need to be jackhammered. Um, there would be quite a bit of work uh, necessary.
Do we own that land, we own the land where they are?
No, no.
Okay.
An agreement with uh, US Navy to use them.
Okay, alright, and um.
We have, so we have a, it's kind of an access and use kind of thing.
Okay, and Mr. Madden, this might be for you, this is kind of a budget organization question. So when we talk about all these different projects like Arctic or things for Wreckin Parks or for aging. All of their, those IT projects are included, included here in the IT budget, not in those individual departments' budgets, correct? It's not a duplication in any way?
No, it should not be duplicated at all, Jack could probably explain more of the separation between what IT pays for and if. Any department pays for anything, but our objective is to centralize as much IT as possible with the Department of IT.
Okay.
Right, I think, I think uh, personnel, personnel pays, that's, there's only one system that we don't pay for and I think it's ADP.
Okay, so when we look, for instance, in the police budget and we're looking at the budget for the Arctic system, that is not including. The IT requirements, that's gonna be in, in the IT budget, not in the Police Department budget.
Correct, they may make requests for the, you know, some aspects of the room or, you know, chairs or, you know.
Sure.
Or something, but uh, all of the IT uh, capabilities would be in our budget. We work very closely with them, it's possible, and we work closely with budget, I gotta give a shout-out to budget, they're, they've been absolutely amazing. Uh, so thank you, as always, uh, you know, we, we could not be here without them, but. Uh, we work closely with budget and uh, our departments, especially in public safety, to make sure that uh, we don't have redundancy. We're not asking for the same thing, that just creates extra work.
Sure.
And then budgets, great, you know, they put it in one or the other, just put it in one.
Okay, alright, do I have any further questions from council members? Anyone, anyone, okay. Um, I believe that is all for our IT team today. I'm sure if we think of other things, will we reach out to you, um.
Sure, yeah, happy, happy to answer any further questions.
So, alright, thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, um, next is Central Services with Ms. Harold.
I will, I'll introduce myself real quick again, I'm Kyle Madden from the Budget Office. You can find Central Services Budget on page one-twenty-five of your proposed budget book, and I will turn it over to Susan for her presentation.
Thanks Kyle. Um, so I think that we're, we have a presentation that we're going to open. Um, Kaylee, can we let um, Kate Dawson in, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that you need to join you?
Is Nicole Clinton also, okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you, good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Council, Susan Harrell, Central Services Officer. With me is Nicole Clinton, the Deputy Central Services Officer, and Kate Dawson, our Senior Management Assistant, who handles our budget. And I would like to give a special thanks to Kyle and Naomi and the rest of the Budget Office for their guidance, as always. I'd like to thank you for your time today and for your support of Central Services operating in capital budgets. As a reminder, Central Services is an internal service agency. While presenting a conservative budget this year, I'd like to point out that the, our priorities. For our requests are directly related to our mission, which is to support county agencies through purchases. Maintenance and renovation of county facilities, maintaining the county fleet, managing the county's safety and insurance programs. Managing the county's purchasing program, and most importantly, assisting with providing opportunities for the citizens of Anarundel County. So I'm gonna start with um, the General Fund and um, Discuss Purchasing, which is on page one-hundred-and-twenty-nine. Um, we are asking for a grade reallocation, and I believe it was approved by the Office of Personnel. We have two assistant purchasing agent positions. And uh, due to the um, responsibilities required for this position and to address some pay compression. We've asked to have the grade reallocated from an NR-nineteen to a twenty. Uh, we are also asking for a software program that's exclusively um, for the office, for the purchasing uh, office, it's LCP Tracker. And what this will do is maintain certified payroll as required by the county's prevailing wage laws. It also tracks compliance for the county's local hire requirements. Uh, the software is imperative to track and monitor and hold the contractors responsible to the required legislation. So this would be recurring funds in our contractual services. And then we have um, mailroom equipment, uh, we are gonna lease new inserer equipment, right now ours is dead. And uh, so we are leasing, we are outsourcing that right now, and it's quite expensive to outsource that. So it will cost less money to lease a new machine, and that's twenty-three, about twenty-three thousand dollars recurring funding. So Facilities Management um, is on page one-hundred-and-thirty, excuse me. And we're asking for some training for our facilities maintenance mechanics. Um, in HVAC systems and in mold remediation. Um, so we feel like this is a really good um, opportunity to increase efficiency and save some money. Give our mechanics the opportunity to have additional training and the ability to troubleshoot smaller repairs. And reduce our reliance on external vendors. We have seen cost increases across the board. Um, on these types of equipment and repair and any uh, faster response times. And um, repairs that we can do in-house will save us money, especially as our infrastructure ages. So we have some one-time and recurring funding um, requested here for that training. Okay. The Self-Insurance Fund, um, as on page one-hundred-and-twenty-one, this is a reclassification request for. Um, really the employee who heads up our workers' compensation claims. Uh, the claims adjuster, it, uh, Senior Claims Adjuster will be a new title in the county and it will give um, opportunity for growth. Uh, but it's just one position we're looking at right now, but this employee really manages. All the training um, on newer claims adjusters, the subrogation process, hearing preparation, works really. Uh, closely with the law office and manages the um, attendance and management for workers' compensation claims. I also wanna, um, also state that lately, the last few years, risk management has really gone above and beyond. To seek um, third-party claims and to date, we have recovered over five-hundred thousand dollars in the Self-Insurance Fund. The Garage Operating Fund, um, this is the um, area where the county fleet manages. Um, service for vehicles across the county. Um, and the purchase of vehicle, not the purchase of vehicle, but the management of the vehicles. So we are asking for reclassification for the employee who basically does the estimating work on uh, when there is body um, damage. Um, and he's working below his classification, so we've, we asked personnel to take a look at that. Um, we are including some training um, funding for this um. In this year's budget, specifically to train our mechanics. To uh, work with the vehicles as we transition to hybrid and the electric fleet. Um, and also to keep the Ford Warranty Shop designation, so. You may or may not know that our um, our garage is uh, certified as a Ford Warranty Shop. And therefore, the mechanics need to maintain that um, mechanical certification. So we've included some money for uh, the training there. And then equipment is, uh, we have two air compressors. And then equipment is, uh, we have two air compressors that have also expelled their. Past their useful life, and so they need to be replaced. Okay, the Vehicle Replacement Fund. This, uh, Fleet Administration manages the cyclic replacement of county lease rate vehicles. And the disposable of replaced vehicles by auction. Um, there was a recent update in the policy that requires all new vehicle purchases for departments. These are lease rate vehicles are budgeted and purchased through the Fleet Administration. So this year's budget, um, includes five new addition to the fleet. So there's, um, a number of vehicles, but it also includes replacement for a hundred and seventy-seven vehicles countywide. And that includes twenty-four vehicles that were totaled during the, this fiscal year. So in total, um, including the new, it's a little over thirteen million dollars, and that's for all of the fleet replacement. So that's the operating budget, are there any questions on that before we move to capital highlights?
Um, I have a question, when you talk about the fleet, does Central Services fleet include the police and, um, sheriff vehicles? Are they considered, are they under you or are they under the Police Department?
No, we order all of the police vehicles.
Okay, so when you talk about fleet replacement, that includes police cars, et cetera?
Police cars, the only thing I think it does not include is the very large fire equipment. But we do order, I would say ambulance, size-wise ambulance is down, Kyle, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But the police interceptor vehicles, the sheriff's vehicles. Uh, and then other very large sort of equipment vehicles, which are direct charge. Let's say a triaxle dump truck that, um, DPW would order, they do that themselves.
Okay, are there any other questions for Central Services? I'm looking through, I don't see anybody's hand up. So, alright, move on, do y'all have capital projects for us?
Have some capital projects. So I'm just gonna run through sort of the highlights here, um, forty-three seventy is our underground storage tank replacement. And that's on page eighteen, this is a multi-year project to remove the storage tanks. Um, in compliance with federal and state law, this just adds funding, it's a hundred thousand dollars per year. Just adds funding to FY thirty-one. Forty-four thirty-five is facility renovation and relocation, that's on page twenty. Again, this is an annual project, um, that we use this funding to. Do office renovation, furniture, space planning. This is really of the bulk of what facilities management is responsible for. Um, and so we had, we're, um, you can see that's programmed eight hundred fifty thousand. We were given an additional three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and then we added money to FY thirty-one, the programmatic amount. But I will say that even at one point two million dollars, this is not enough. We will continue to have a backlog in the projects, these are things like painting, carpet. Uh, bathrooms, things that we are regularly requested each year from the departments to do. And we did not even take any new projects from departments this year. So as our infrastructure continues to age, we will continue to have projects, so. We thank you for your consideration on this one, it's important. Another very important one is fifty-three seventy-eight, county facilities and systems upgrade. These are multi-year projects, these are very large projects that are full, like a full floor is gonna get renovated. A full building is gonna get renovated, large HVAC systems are gonna be brought up to current standards. Um, we have budgeted here, uh, nine and a half million dollars and then adding the programmatic amount to FY thirty-one. Again, still will continue to have a backlog, these, uh, costs have increased over the last couple of years. These have very long lead times and we work, uh, very closely with DPW on these projects. Because they require engineering. Then we have, uh, fifty-seven seventeen, which is the parking garage repair. Um, this is for the, mostly the Whitmore, but also the Glen Burnie parking garages. There was a project budget increase of ten million dollars, it was spread out over the few years. Um, due to the condition of the Whitmore garage, um, so there is a funding increase of six hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-six. The rest of that was, um, spread over the project, but the project is scheduled to end in FY thirty. The Millersville Garage renovation is on page thirty-four. Um, this is a project to renovate the current garage in Millersville. Once the fire equipment maintenance facility is completed. Um, and so, uh, in FY twenty-six, uh, we've included money here for design and to start construction. But most of the construction looks like will be in FY twenty-seven. And below that is the Fire Equipment Maintenance Facility on page thirty-five. And this is the new facility that's underway, the majority of the construction, it will be in FY twenty-six. By, uh, ten and a half million dollars, and this is exclusively for the fire apparatus maintenance. Okay, Ralph Bunch Community Center is on page thirty-six. This is a full renovation for a building that the county purchased, it's in South County, county purchased from the community. The Community Center is leasing it back from the county. We will do a full renovation for the building and as a result, there will be community space. Flexible county workspace, a food pantry, some museum spaces throughout the building. Um, and then it will also provide eventually pre-K, the availability, it'll have the space for pre-K in that part of the county. So it's, uh, we've added five and a half million dollars in FY twenty-six for the construction. The EV charging station and other green technology is on page forty-two. This is a project, well, the feasibility study is done, a vendor has been selected. We're working with the Resilience Authority, they are managing the project. But, um, this is to install the infrastructure for the EV, uh, charging stations throughout the county. Which will support the county vehicles primarily, at least at first. Um, and so, um, here we've just added money to FY thirty-one. The Circuit Courthouse, um, renovation and this, um, for FY twenty-six. Will replace the fire alarms, the heating and cooling systems, other structural repairs, restrooms. Um, this, um, actually this has a funding decrease of nine million dollars over the past, over six years. You can see the decrease in FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven. And then that will finish up the project in FY twenty-eight. And finally, our ADA retrofit fit installation is this is programmed, programmed out. Adding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to FY thirty-one, and this is the fund we use when we get requests. Or when we find areas throughout the county that require some ADA adjustment, it will come out this fund. Fifty-nine twelve, the County Septic System Assessment and is on page forty-five and replacement. Last year, we added this as a new capital project to conduct an assessment throughout the county. Of the larger septic systems for county facilities. And what we've done here is we've added seven hundred and thirty-nine to this, um, upcoming fiscal year. Should we find, the assessment is ongoing, but should we find a system that needs to be replaced? We would have, we estimate seven thirty-nine is the cost for a new, uh, system. Based on a project that we're doing now. And then finally, we have the Glen Burnie Plaza redevelopment on page forty-six. This is a project that we are partnering with the Resilience Authority. To improve the outdoor community space, increase resiliency and stormwater management. Um, in the Glen Burnie, um, Town Center area, there is no funding for FY twenty-six. It's eight and a half million dollars for FY twenty-seven. And that is it for capital, any questions?
Um, so, okay, not seeing anyone. Um, I have a couple of questions, you have two hundred and fifty thousand, um. Planned for request for ADA things, and I know that's an ongoing thing, is that enough? Um, each year to, to meet the requests and things for ADA? I know that's kind of an ongoing process all the time, but is that enough for the projects that we have?
I would say that we, um, and Kate, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say that we use that every year. And, um, we work very closely with the Department of Aging and Disabilities as they identify other places. There was a, uh, a self-assessment that was done a few years ago, and so when. Items to be adjusted are not self-identified and their, you know, requests come from the department, we then go back to that. So, yes, we can always use additional funding in that area, the list is long and some of. Some of the costs are high for those adjustments, um, so yes, we could always, uh, use more. But this is, uh, sort of what we have programmed each year to, as we find things.
And for instance, let's say like you're renovating the Ralph Bunch Center. If you're doing ADA as part of that renovation, you're automatically doing ADA things, that wouldn't come out of those ADA funds. That would all be included in the budget for the Ralph Bunch Center, correct?
That's correct, so all the new, you know, when we do these large renovations, yes, we are making all of those to code now. But I'll give you a good example here at Heritage, we have to make some adjustments in the curb. And, um, so we'll do curb cuts, so addition to like a curb cut, um, in the eight, um. Some of the, uh, senior centers, we need to install some ramps, um, like they have a stage in one of them and they want. The, their members to be able to get up on stage, so we're installing a ramp there. Um, and then, so as we go into these older buildings and they're identified by the departments, they call us and we'll go in and do it. But yes, anything that we're doing for new, like a full reno, will automatically have those adjustments made.
Okay, um, can you, um, expla, can you give us an explanation for why the Circuit Court is reduced nine million dollars? I mean, we love reductions, but what's that?
I'm not, I, is, do we have a, Naomi, do we have anybody from DPW here that could really speak to that?
Yes, I believe David Braun might be available as a panelist to give you that information.
Okay, just, we can wait. And while we wait for David, I have another question then, um, the, how many, you talked about the septic, um, survey that you're doing. How many county-owned septic systems do we have?
Well, that's part of the assessment, so here's what I can tell you is some of the parks specifically. Um, are in need, and we are redoing a system, I believe, at Downs Park right now. So these parks that are older, forty years old, when, when they were built. And specifically since COVID, as you probably know, uh, the amount of, uh, visitors that we get. Has exponentially increased every time, and Rockin Parks does a fantastic job of keeping our, our, our park facilities. So that people wanna go there, but over time, the systems, um, have deteriorated. Um, so that's part of the assessment is to actually see who is on septic, who is on sewer and document it. The age that it was installed and so on, and so I believe DPW is starting and, and in the midst of working on that. And I don't have an exact number.
Well, part of that assessment be to see if some of those that are on septic could be connected to county water instead? County services instead?
Yes, I would, yes, I would think so, I would hope so, and there would be an associated cost for that. And so, you know, future capital projects could be as a result, but if they're, um. If they're far enough out and they can't be, then we would have to replace the septic system.
Okay, so that's working hand in hand, so this is in y'all's budget, but you're working with DPW to do this?
We do, a lot of these larger projects, we work, um, very closely with DPW, they're great partners to have. When it requires, um, engineering expertise.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure where David is, but he did indicate that they didn't need to do as much work on the HVAC system as they originally anticipated.
Okay, I mean, that's, we always love to hear that, I'm just curious why. Yeah, we, we always like to see nine million dollar savings, so. Alright, are there any further questions from any council members?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just promoted David Braun to answer any other questions, sorry for the delay.
No problem, hi David, um, thank you, we were just wondering about that nine million dollar savings on the Circuit Court.
Yeah, and, and the information that you gave, uh, gave you is, um, was, uh, what, what we identified. We had a whole lot of work anticipated on the HVAC system when we originally started this project, and we got into it, we just found that. Not all of that was gonna be required, so we made that adjustment in the budget this year.
Okay, great, thank you, alright, there are no further questions, um, thank you very much. Um, to Central Services.
Thank you.
Have a good day, and we will move on to inspections and permits, Mr. Wienermeyer, Mr. Wietermeyer?
I'll wait for my inspection and permits people to come on.
Yeah.
I see them, I'll introduce myself again, I'm Kyle Madden from the Budget Office. Uh, you can find Inspection and Permits Budget on page two oh eight of your proposed budget book. And I will turn it over to Mark for his presentation.
Morning, Madam Chair and fellow council members, thank you for your time this morning to review and discuss our budget. Thank you to Kyle and the Budget Team for their assistance again this year, strictly appreciated. Uh, with me today, I have to my right, our newest member to our team, Samantha Cobb, who does our, uh, Budget and HR. Um, Management, um, next to her is Jay Shinsky, who is our Assistant Director in the Permit Center. To my immediate left is Raghu Badami, who is our Assistant Director over Engineering and Inspection Services. And to his left is Andrew McCara, who is our Assistant Director over Building Plan Review and Inspections. Knowing that each of you are very knowledgeable of the work and services that our department provides. This year, we wanted to briefly highlight a few areas that provide insight into what we do in the community at IMP. As well as some of the accomplishments of our staff. We continue to support Anarundel County Public Schools by attending job brunch fairs. And have participated in hiring events sponsored by the Office of Personnel and the Anarundo County Workforce Development Group. We also hosted a student in the Permit Center this year through the Maryland Corps of Service Year Option Program. And had a tremendous amount of success with that. Other events that we continue to participate in are River Day Festival events, which are very well attended. And feature fun activities for all ages and also allows us a great opportunity to provide environmental education. IMP staff have either attended or presented at the Community Association Summits, Budget Town Halls. And have provided training to landscape and tree contractors, environmental groups, Realtor Associations and, and additional, uh, groups. Our staff partakes in several annual continuing education classes and conferences. Our team holds more than one hundred and thirty-one licenses and certifications as well as membership. In multiple professional organizations to ensure that they are up to date on industry standards. This includes three certified building officials, of which there are only thirty-three in the state of Maryland. And includes two Master Code Professionals, of which there are only approximately a thousand worldwide. We have eight professional engineers, two engineers in training and one registered architect. All of our electrical, mechanical and plumbing inspectors have Masters License with the, uh, State of Maryland. Finally, our Permit Center has been upgraded to ensure our customers and applicants have a more pleasant and seamless experience. If it's necessary for them to visit the Permit Center. Those upgrades include new technology hardware and an updated lobby area with kiosks. That allow our staff to assist customers more efficiently. Our employees dedication and outreach is for the education and safety of our county residents and visitors. Our employees' dedication and outreach is for the education and safety of our county residents and visitors. Um, with that and understanding that you have had the opportunity to review our budget pages, we are open to discussing any questions that you may have.
Um, so do I have any questions from my colleagues? So I do want to ask about so right now, um, the our budget analysis show analysis shows that there are nine vacancies in the department, some of which have been vacant for a while. Um, just want to check on the status of those and where that's going.
Sure. So our current vacancy list shows fourteen vacancies. Uh, one of those vacancies will be moving to Animal Control.
Sure.
Um, three of those positions are being reclassed with this proposed budget uh, to move to be able to serve areas that we have a greater need. Um, so and a couple of those have been vacant for a period of time. Uh, we have eight positions currently scheduled for interviews and two are um, currently being advertised. So I hope that answers your questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions from any of my colleagues? All right, continue. Do we have a, is this, do we have a capital request?
We do have a capital budget.
Capital budget, please.
Uh, morning, Madam Chair and council members. Uh, my name is Raghu Badami. I'm the Assistant Director for Inspections and Permits. Uh, so uh, for IMP Capital Budget, we have two projects. They're both are forestry-related projects. Uh, project number one is C five three one two hundred. This is on Budget Book, uh, page twenty-four. Uh, this project allows the department to purchase properties and easements on properties for the purposes of preserving uh, forest and expanding tree cover in the county. Uh, we are currently working with stakeholders, both internal and external, to find these properties and uh, enhance our ability to preserve and reforest properties. Uh, one example is we recently had a stakeholder meeting. Uh, we work with the Chesapeake Bay Trust, who is our grant partner. Uh, we also started to have a monthly meeting with the Bureau of Warship Protection, Rockin Parks, and Office of Planning and Zoning, where we are trying to figure out how we can further coordinate and collaborate and enhance the opportunities because different departments have different programs and we are trying to find out how we can help them out and how they can help us out. Uh, but also eliminate silos where they are. In FY twenty-five, uh, we have uh, been able to purchase one property. Um, it's about ten acres. Uh, and we settled on the property at the end of January. And for FY twenty-six, we are requesting five hundred thousand dollars for reforestation fund. Uh, this is the property that we purchased. Uh, uh, this is down in Laurel, Maryland. This is the the residential subdivision. This is right next to the Potexton Refuge. And it's about ten acres and it has high preservation uh, potential uh, based on uh, forestry scaffolding. Uh, the second project is on page thirty-nine, C five eight two seven hundred. Uh, this is essentially a county mitigation bank. Uh, what it does is as we uh, capital projects are proposed, including uh, Rockin Parks Projects, uh, DPW Projects, uh, school projects. Whenever they are required to uh, mitigate for the forest loss on the property, they pay fee and loo. And this uh, uh, project collects those fees and loos and then we purchase properties through the other project and then reforest using this account. So the current, the county currently has two banks. One is the Craftic Civic Association Mitigation Bank, which is about three and a half acres. The other one is a Rockhole Creek Farm Mitigation Project. Yeah, this is essentially the self-funding project where the fee and loo payments are paid and then the county either reforest or purchases those properties. So for FY twenty-five activity, uh, we did some plant maintenance at the uh, one of our uh, mitigation banks. We are looking to reforest about one acre, one point one five acre, uh, at a uh, county treatment plan. And we are also looking to reforest uh, at the Muddl Avenue property. It has about a half acre that does need to be reforested. Uh, but FY twenty-six, uh, there is a fee and loo request coming in for one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for a county capital budget. This is the the Craftic Civic Association mitigation side. This is off of Route Three. Uh, this is the one point one five acres that we are looking to reforest. This is the the county treatment plan. And that's the end of the uh, uh, capital projects that we have. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions? All right, I don't see any questions from my colleagues.
Madam Chair, my apologies.
Yes. No problem.
I I just wanted to take a minute during this part of this, uh, your presentation to ask about um the how we are moving forward in the county with um, tackling invasives? And does IMP view that as an opportunity with in this um program within the budget to enhance forest conservation and better maintain our our tree canopy with working through mitigation such as um invasive removal and things like that?
Uh, thank you for the question, Councilwoman Pickard. So we are uh, currently working that invasive management as a part of the operating budget. Uh, so we are hand, we are doing a couple of different things. Uh, so we do have management services, uh, which is funded out of the both of uh, Forest Con uh, budget and also the Critical Area Budget. Uh, and we have done a couple of projects specifically on homeowners association properties, which we partner with uh, on a regular basis. We also started to work with the local nonprofits, Warship Stewards Academy, including Save Our Trees, to see where either we attend their events that are organized by them and also see where there are opportunities. Uh, we do have an existing program uh, called Weed Warriors, which were looking to due to staff retirement that we are looking to kind of bring that back up. Where we provide logistical support and also uh, specific material support for invasive removal uh, with local uh, grant partners. We did have a recent retirement for the Code Enforcement Administrator. And one of the things that we are looking for the new person once they are brought on board is to uh, lead the uh, invasive work group that uh, partners with the uh, local uh, county departments and also nonprofits. So I think that would be step to make sure that we are collaborating with both internal partners and also external partners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Um, two of your forestation projects are in my district, so I will look forward to seeing those.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day. And next up is Planning and Zoning, Ms. Dempsey.
I'll introduce myself for the last time today. I'm Kyle Madden from the Budget Office. You can find the Planning and Zoning Budget on page one ninety-nine of you, of your budget book. Um, I would like to give a quick summary of what's impacting their FY twenty-six budget before I turn it over. So in the general fund, they're only seeing about a two point six percent increase to their budget this year. Um, the biggest impact is coming from the countywide pay package. Um, that is being partially offset by the fact that in FY twenty-five, they had a large number of one-time funding requests. So in FY twenty-six, those one-time funding requests are being taken out. That's why you see some of the negatives when you look at their budget book pages. There are some reductions in there. It's because of the removal of one-time funding from FY twenty-five. Um, they are getting one new manager of planning and zoning position um, in the classified service, but that is being offset by the deletion of the exempt position. And they are also converting a long-time contractor position to a merit position, which is the program manager position. Um, with that, I will turn it over to Jenny for her presentation.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody. Um, as you know, I'm Jenny Dempsey. Um, I'm joined here today with um, two of my colleagues, Christina Pompa, the Deputy Planning and Zoning Officer, and Allison Valiant, the Program Manager. Um, the Office of Planning and Zoning is very pleased to submit a budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The department consists of four divisions, eighty-five full-time employees, and six contractual employees. OPZ's efforts include a regional planning process, as you all know, active legislation demands, and public education engagement ranging from heritage preservation to community development. Significant resources were dedicated to finding efficiencies in our existing resources to meet the departmental commitments. OPZ collaborated with the council, the administration agencies, and other stakeholders on approximately twenty pieces of legislation, including the Housing Attainability Act, or MPDU bill, the Mixed Use Zoning Bill, and the Redevelopment Bill. Currently, right now, uh, OPZ is working with ACDS to develop an implementation program for the new MPDU requirements that will become effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
Good morning, council members. Christina Pompo with the Office of Planning and Zoning, here to talk about the region plans, comprehensive zoning, and the Agriculture and Woodland Preservation Program. So OPZ has had the pleasure of spending a lot of time in council chambers this fiscal year. Uh, we have finalized the mapping for Region Four during this fiscal year and then uh, legislation for Regions One, Three, and Nine was introduced in early twenty twenty-five. And I'm happy to announce, as you know, that all three of the region plans and their comprehensive zoning bills were adopted by council this year in April and May. Staff are working currently to finalize all the mapping and the region plans. And that will all be done this fiscal year. Um, during the Region One, Three, and Nine process, the Long Range Planning Team hosted or attended seventy-two community meetings to educate residents on the process for developing the region pr- plans. The community input helps shape the region plan narratives. Our research and GIS team developed data and mapping products for each phase of the planning process for the regions. And they're also halfway through the work on Regions Five, Six, and Eight. Uh, this includes updating GIS data for zoning, planned land use, and other policy layers, displaying the policy layers in static and web mapping products and developing and mapping the data for any zoning land use amendments. Under ag preservation, ag and woodland preservation, we have two staff in the Planning Division, a program manager and agricultural planner that work on the county's agricultural and woodland preservation program. OPZ has had the program since July twenty twenty-three, when it was transferred from the Department of Recreation and Parks. Staff have continued to develop strong relationships and program improvements in the program, including administration of the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Applications, the Rural Legacy Grant Program, and the County Zone Easement and District Programs. Uh, we had one mouth mouth offer from FY twenty twenty-four that is expected to close in FY twenty-six for one point three seven million. And the county uh, purchased an easement for ninety-four acres under its county program in November twenty twenty-four for seven hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Alrighty, uh, looking ahead for fiscal year twenty-six, um, the zoning division has increased efficiency and saved a lot of trees with the implementation of Acela Loon in the fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, this fiscal year, the Development Division followed suit, working with OIT, Acela reps, and OPZ staff on the implementation of the next phase. And that projected launch date is August first of twenty twenty-five. Numerous improvements are expected with the launch of the Acela software in development. Acela will allow for a single repository for development data and project information. Applicants will have online access to their development projects, including automated communication to keep them informed about their project.
In FY twenty twenty-five, the Cultural Resources Section staff conducted historical and architectural investigations at six historic properties significant to the county's agricultural heritage as part of a Maryland Historical Trust non-capital grant project. In FY twenty-six, work will begin to publish the agricultural thematic report as well as documentation of historic resources as a result of the anticipated completion of the study in September twenty twenty-five. Um, as far as the region plans, I talked a little bit about Region Plans One, Three, and Nine, which we expect to be fully completed in FY twenty twenty-five. Staff is about halfway through their work on Regions Five, Six, and Eight. And that includes the Crofton, Millersville, uh, Crownsville, and South County on the western side of the county, portion of the county. And we expect introduction to the county council in early twenty twenty-six. Draft zoning maps for these regions are expected to be released for public review in June of twenty twenty-five. So the Crownsville Hospital History Project falls under the Cultural Resources Section. That's also under the Planning Division. The county did receive a federal earmark grant for five hundred thousand dollars in calendar year twenty twenty-four. The purpose of the grant is to establish an oral history program and a public archival repository, both of which will provide valuable public engagement and establish a foundation for furthering the efforts to preserve the sensitive history of the Crownsville Hospital. This fiscal year, OPZ seeks to hire a contract manager through FY twenty-nine, who would be responsible for all facets of the e- and execution of the grant. The position would be budget neutral, as we would reallocate budgeted funds for one of our long-range planning contractors from FY twenty-five. The earmark award is a high-profile investment that requires a dedicated leader to appropriately manage the grant requirements. Hiring a contractor would ensure that grant resources are being used in compliance with grant obligations. Switching over to the capital budget programs, the Agricultural and Woodland Preservation Program that the county administers falls under the county's capital budget. The Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation is currently on a two-year funding cycle with FY twenty-five applications expected to be funded in FY twenty-six. The county currently has five applications with mouth. And if all of them are funded and all of the property owners accept their offers, the county match will likely be in excess of one point three million dollars. We expect this to be less expensive than if the county funded some of the easements through its own county program. We had expected the FY twenty-six uh, mouth allotment from the state to be thirty-four million, but the approved allotment dropped to six point six million. If we want to continue with our agricultural preservation programs in future years, we can expect more demand on the local program due to lack of funding at the state level. We have six property owners inquiry inquiring about easements at this time, so demand is high. We are requesting three point three million for the program in FY twenty-six. We also currently have eight hundred and ninety-one thousand in rural legacy grant funding to spend, to spend, and we're still seeking a property owner um, for that funding.
Thank you, Christina. Uh, and thank you all for your time this morning. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I have a question on the capital budget. So we are anticipating thirty-four million for the agriculture preservation and from the state. We only got six million. Is that just cuts from the state program overall that we're coming through? That's a big drop.
It it is a big drop. I mean, one of the proposals earlier had been to zero out the funding. Uh, they didn't do that. They they still maintain six point six million, but that is spread across all of our Maryland counties. So it is a significant drop in funding for them. So it is a significant drop in funding for them. The one thing I do want to say, so we have a county program uh, that buys easements. And in general, I would say that our county program is faster. Both programs are based on fair market value assessment, but MELF pays seventy-five percent of fair market, where the county program pays sixty percent. So everybody in general wants MELF because they get more money. Um, MELF funding is also advantageous for the county because MELF handles all the enforcement, which, if there is an enforcement issue, can be significant, especially if it ends up going to court. So I think our goal would be to try and get as many projects funded or properties funded through MELF. And it's a lower match for us than if we actually buy county easements. You know, we've only had this program uh, since the beginning, well, July of twenty-four, no, twenty-three, sorry, July of twenty-three, and we're still learning a lot of the intricacies of the program. But that's one of the newer things we've learned.
Okay, alright. Um, Ms. Dempsey, I have a question. So one of your positions is, you said, a long-time contract position has been moved to um, a merit, to a full-time employee. Do you have any other long-time contract positions in your department that have been there a long time as well?
Yes, um, long-time contractors that also work down in London Town in the lab.
Okay.
As well.
So that's another historic preservation-type, archaeological-type position.
Yes.
Currently, currently under contract, but has been a long-time employee.
Yes, ma'am, too.
Alright. So that, so that one, that, that's one position, correct? Or is that two positions?
The total of three positions down um, at the lab that are contractors currently. Um, in this, in this um, budget that you see before you right now, one of those pens is being uh, converted to a merit position. The other two will be remain contractors at this time.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. There any other questions for Office of Planning and Zoning? Everybody's being very quiet this morning. Wake up.
Yeah.
So, alright, no further questions. Well, thank you all. We appreciate you. We've been seeing lots of y'all lately. Um, because of region plans, and we are grateful, and um, we will be seeing lots more of you in the, in the coming months. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Good day.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is the Office of Transportation. Mr. Sneed.
Good morning. I'll go ahead and start off. Um, I'm Marika Hannam from the Budget Office, supporting uh, the Office of Transportation. Uh, we are starting on page um, one-eighty-four. And I just wanted to give a couple of quick highlights um, that are shown on page one-eighty-five. Um, basically, the Office of Transportation's funding has increased five-point-four million dollars in, I'm sorry, five-point-three million dollars in two thousand twenty-six. One-point-one of that is in the general fund. And it's comprised of their transit contract, which is up about half a million dollars, um, or regular PSC adjustments, which are just over uh, point uh, one million dollars. And then grant matches, uh, which is required, sort of a local cash match, um, for the higher grant funding that we have. That's point-seven million dollars. On the grant side, the biggest increase is in our Large Urban Grant, and that's the significant increase that you see um, in the grant fund of uh, two-point-six million dollars. And then there's another um, ARPA grant of one-point-six million dollar increase um, that adds to the five-point-three million dollar increase bottom line. And now let, go ahead, uh, go ahead and um, turn it over to Sam.
Hello, good morning, all. Um, thank you for your extensive work with us throughout the budget process. Uh, I want to thank both, they know me and um, Marika. And um, I, I really also want to thank Chris Schrumbauer for his guidance as well. We're gonna walk through our budget proposal here with the council members. I want to thank the Chair, uh, Chairwoman as well for taking the time to listen to our budget presentation today. And I'll have with me my transportation administrator and my planning administrator as well. If we have any additional questions outside the scope of the presentation, um, could you move to the next slide? Uh, we'll first start with the operations budget. Uh, next slide, please. So our office, as you know, has many functions, uh, planning, operations, capital projects, grants management, and then, of course, innovation. Uh, next slide, please. And we're separated into two components. One is focused on planning and capital projects, and the other is focused on our transit operations. We have one vacancy due to retirement uh, that we hope to fill shortly. That just happened in March. Um, next slide, please. So several of our department members are really extensively trained in grant applications. And you can see through our past grant awards, that's truly benefited the county. Uh, we won grants for Safe Streets for All. Uh, Safe Streets for All allows for full study of pedestrian and bikeway paths and allows us to upgrade facilities for ADA and uh, access to transit throughout the county. And that's received a lot of good public engagement and outreach, and we're still working on that particular study. We hope to wrap it by the end of this year. We're also really engaged with Safe Routes to School. Um, that's a, a grant we continue to win, and we're hoping to uh, add another position um, in, in future years if we win an additional grant for that program. There's also the Transportation Alternatives Program. Our Bike Ped Planner has been excellent in applying for and winning grant awards. And this is yet another project that, that'll be a crucial connection for a shared use path along Blue Water Boulevard. And then we have our Electric Ferry. As you know, we won that competitive grant last year, and we're working on the implementation process to allow us to link between Queen Anne's and Baltimore City, uh, and Annapolis. And then we have our Bike Ways Grant that'll provide additional funding for that shared use path connection. And then our Low No Grant, we're, we're anticipating the delivery of three new hybrid buses. That'll be uh, operating on our three high-performing routes uh, throughout the county. And then we have our annual grant we received for um, our transportation plan from MTA. So why I wanted to highlight these is because all these grants are won, um, a lot of them competitively because of the, the great staff we have here in the Office of Transportation. And not all counties uh, benefit from these grants throughout our state. And uh, this is definitely a boon for our county to have this dedicated staff who continually uh, win these grant awards. Um, and it takes the burden off the general fund budget as well. Uh, next slide, please. Um, I do want to highlight um, our routes throughout the county. Uh, we've made some enhancements and modifications throughout the year to better serve our citizenry. And um, we've really enhanced our fixed route transit. And you'll see a lot of stop upgrades, sign upgrades, um, and, and better route planning. Uh, and we really engage with the citizens, citizenry uh, in, in the county. And we survey them regularly to get feedback, so we can make improvements on a regular basis as well. Uh, next slide, please. This is our uh, bus network, and it shows the ridership. So it signs real numbers, and it shows the areas where the ridership uh, are, is located. So it shows the source, uh, and those who were benefiting from um, additional transit. And you'll see there's, there's been a lot of growth in the last uh, twelve months as well. Next slide, please. So this has been our highest ridership past twelve months. Um, so in the last twelve months, we've had over three-hundred-forty-nine-thousand riders for transit, which is great, because when I started about three and a half years ago, we had about a hundred thousand. So we really increased our totals. Um, we have really sophisticated tracking devices on our vehicles that allows us to track how many passengers we have and plan our trips even better. And we have a community that's really engaged in using the transit. And it's allowed us to grow. And um, of course, our transit is fare-free. Um, and we appreciate the council and the um, county executive continuing to fund a fare-free transit system. Next slide, please. Uh, for our proposed operating budget, we did see some increases, as the, the budget analysts pointed out. Mostly due to the fact that we have a contract with TransDev. They provide us with operators, and they provide us with call takers and um, and maintenance staff as well. Um, and that contract increases on an annual basis. What happens is we renegotiate uh, in January of each year, and the contract goes up. So there was an increase there. I do want to also highlight that we had an increase in our budget as a reward of sorts, because our ridership went up. So what MTA does is they see that your ridership has gone up in your population, and they increase your operating budget. So as a result, our match increases as well. Um, and we also have an increased budget because we have additional funds coming in through um, Uber Lyft fees, which was uh, passed in a prior budget. So we collect those fees and use them for transit initiatives. Next slide, please. So before I move on to capital, I, I did want to hand it over to the Chair and see if you have any questions for me and my staff on the operating portion.
Um, what was our, the income for the Uber, the new Uber charge this year? How much did we get in funding?
So roughly one-point-one-five million.
Okay.
And, and a big attributable factor to that is we do home, we are, are home to the airport. So it always helps.
Okay, exactly, to have that. So, and I do have a question. So one of the grants was the ARPA grant. And I thought in general that we had no money left in the ARPA funding, but um, y'all still have one-point-six in there. So um, I, I thought that had all been used up or was, had expired. Can you give some more information on that grant?
So we did expend our ARPA capital, but we're just programming the remainder of the ARPA um, operations. And, and Crystal can give you a little bit of insight on why we held that over for this final year.
Okay.
Crystal, are you on? Are you unmuted?
It was being transferred over right now.
Okay, thank you. Crystal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, how's everyone doing this morning? Yes, um, our, um, ARPA grant, um, we had uh, the capital award, um, which was um, a um, extension of our um, ARPA funding. And so we will be uh, spending that in the uh, twenty-twenty uh, sixth year because we were able to extend it. Um, the remaining um, twenty-twenty-five and uh, twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five um, ARPA funding will be utilized um, by the um, end of this, um, end of this year.
The end of this fiscal year?
Yeah.
This fiscal year?
Yes, this fiscal year.
Okay, so, but some was allowed to be extended out. I know that there, there had been some movement on the federal government not to provide the funding for the extensions for um, education funding. Uh, but that has not happened for our, for our transportation funding at this time.
That is, that is correct, yes.
Okay. Alright, um, thank you for that. And I want, so the Safe Routes to School, I've, I've sat in and participated in some of those meetings. I think it's great planning. That grant is just for the planning for the Safe Routes to identify things, correct? It's not for the actual implementation.
That's correct.
Okay, so if we want to actually implement all the great things that we're finding from those things, that will have to be separate funding at a different time that comes in.
Yes, either we could apply for um, a Safe Routes uh, grant from FHWA or Reconnecting Communities Grant, or we could apply for a state grant. It really depends on the nature of the project um, and its eligibility. Some are simple sidewalk connections. Some may be rec- wreck and parks projects because they're um, off-road paths. So it really depends on what comes out from that study and what's recommended ultimately. It could be a capital project within our future budget as well. You may, you may actually see some in, in our capital improvement program because as we move forward, we implement these projects. We don't generally keep the plans on the shelf. We'll take them and convert them to a capital project for a future year.
Sure, that's, that's what I, I wanted to, because as I said, I've sat in, and there's some great ideas and plans coming and things being identified. And I, I, plans are great, but I don't want them to sit on the shelf. I want to see them put in motion, so. So, alright, are there any further questions from council members before we go on to capital? I don't see any flags. Alright, continue.
Right, uh, next slide, please. So, as you just stated, all of our projects are born from plans. And um, our biggest plan is obviously Move Anna Rundle. Uh, and then there are the component plans. Um, there are the Co- Corridor Growth Management Plan, the Complete Streets Guidance, um, the, the Transit Development Plan, uh, which is a five-year plan that was recently approved. And we're actually just wrapping on the EV Hybrid Transition Plan for our bus uh, and van fleet. And we're upgrading our ferry operations plan um, as we move forward to implement the uh, the ferry project as well. And, and we're actively engaging with Division Zero Plan and Initiative in partnership with DPW and other departments like the Police Department and Department of Education. Next slide, please. So one of our bigger projects, which I'm really excited about, is the Odenton Mark TOD Development Phase One and Two A. Um, this project will not only create a garage that has unique features that allow it to blend into the local area, uh, especially through engagement with, with the local community members. It allows for this uh, very uh, unique design that's specific to Odenton. It also has multimodal elements, uh, places to park your bike, charging stations, um, eventually solar pa- panels on the roof as well. Um, and it ties all the parking into one enclosed area, which will allow the space around the Odenton Mark Garage facility to be freed up for future development. Uh, and we're really excited about this project because it's been on the books for a little while, but now it's actually going to break ground in the coming calendar year. So um, this is one in particular that I'm, I'm glad it's moving forward. Um, next slide, please. Uh, the next project I want to highlight is a transportation operations facility. Um, we've been renting the facility because we moved from the seven-four-nine facility, which is going to be another future TOD project. And uh, this off facility will allow us to have plenty of space for our vehicles, uh, future conduits for charging our electric and hybrid fleet uh, in, in offices and a garage space that's sufficient for maintenance uh, and, and the operation of our vehicle fleet. We have roughly sixty-five um, bus and van vehicles at this time. Next slide, please. Um, we also have a unique addition to the capital budget this year. We're taking the transition plan and utilizing that to um, purchase expansion buses for our fleet. Electric and hybrid, based on the recommendations provided by that um, H, HEV or BEB, which is Hybrid Electric Vehicles and Batter Electric um, buses plan. Next slide, please. We also won an Electric Ferry uh, grant, and we're utilizing those funds to purchase two electric ferries and the associated infrastructure to charge the ferries at the various locations uh, where the ferry project will be uh, operating. Next slide, please. This project, I ninety-seven, was originally a TSMO project, but based on state highways recommendation, they expanded uh, the project to be a full widening project, which will be widened not only um, along the limits, but also the off and on ramps throughout to accommodate um, the increase in traffic uh, for the area. And that is due to the increased population. An added benefit to this- And, and that is due to the increased population. An added benefit to this is it will also add lanes that are transit vehicles uh, which presently operate along ninety-seven for some routes can utilize as well. But if we extend our transit further, uh, MTA transit vehicles could use the additional lane as well as any future transit um for, for our county. Next slide, please. Uh, and I'm going to turn it over to Brian to explain the, the Poplar Trail project.
Uh, yeah, this is the South Shore Poplar Trail Connection. Um, there are a number of projects, uh, you can see highlighted in, uh, I guess black with black lettering. That we're working on with the city and the state on connecting to be an A trail uh, and the Poplar Trail and the South Shore Trails to connect uh, both the city and the county residents to each other. So this is, this is a kind of a missing gap um, that Wreckin Parks is doing the South Shore Trail that's going to come down to the existing trail in Best Gate Road. City's working on the West East Express uh, they're ne, near the Poplar Trail. And then again, the county and the state and the city are working on crossing the Naval Academy Bridge. Um, so, and we have another project, actually it's not highlighted on there, Taylor Avenue uh, as well. It carries it down. Well, actually it's shown there that carries it down to the Marine Corps Stadium. Um, so this is kind of that missing gap along West Street from Gibraltar to Route Two. And I think that's all the, the new projects that we have. The re, the rest are adjustments to existing projects. Um, if you have any questions about existing projects, uh, probably David or us can answer those.
All right. Do I have any questions, Ms. Rodban?
Hi, um, I just wanted to say thank you for um, so many of the great projects that you have. Um, I, I love that you're working on the expanding the Poplar Trail and making some other really important connections um, for um, bike ped in Annapolis, um, where it seems to be that folks are actually um, I see lots more folks on their bikes and going around on the scooters. Um, I just want to express my concern once again. I, I know other elected officials that represent Annapolis have concerns about expanding I ninety-seven and just the idea that we are trying to accommodate uh, traffic when um, you know, a, as I've mentioned before, this was my commute for ten years and the delay there unless there's an accident is never more than about five minutes and spending ten thou, or excuse me, ten million dollars of county funds um, and a potentially a hundred million dollars of state funds when there are so many other priorities that I think could be beneficial. I just really am, I'm frustrated to see this back in the budget again. Um, you know, when we, we actually pulled a bill over, over this very topic. Um, you know, study after study shows that adding additional lanes does not actually resolve any traffic concerns for more than just a few years. So um you know, I've, I've already received testimony again on this topic about um, why is this, why is the county investing money in this? Um, I, I do understand the idea of um you know, possibly allowing um you know, o, other transit vehicles to use an additional lane, but uh, that, that, you know, there was no concrete plans. Um, the environmental impact, um, using space that might be a future um, area for rail. Um, I just, I, I really wish this weren't in the budget. I wish that this could just not be a priority. Ten million dollars is a lot of money. We could spend on a ton of different things.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rodby. And anybody, anyone else? So, all right. Thank you, Mistress Need and team. We appreciate it.
Thank you all. And before I depart, I also want to thank DPW. They're always instrumental in helping us prepare our capital budget and presenting throughout the year and going through the audit process. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
All right. And last, but certainly not least, Wreckin Parks. Ms. Lays. And Ms. Matthews.
Hi, thank you. We love being last. It's, they save the best for last and we'll get you done so you can eat lunch before you get hangry. So, um, I think we're going to kick it off with our budget analyst, although I don't see him on, so I can just start talking. Um, our budget presentation-
I'm sorry, he's coming.
Oh, okay.
Give him just a second, let's see.
Absolutely.
Good morning. This is-
Good morning.
I'm the analyst from the Office of Budget assigned to the Department of Recreation and Parks. The department's operating budget appears in the budget book beginning on page two hundred and forty-nine. And I'd now like to introduce the Director of Recreation and Parks, Jessica Lays, who will introduce her team and give you the department's budget presentation.
All right. Thank you, Neil. Uh, today I got with me Erica Matthews, our deputy director. Um, and then when we get to the capital side, we will have Bruce Bruci, who is our Chief of Planning and Construction. Uh, you're familiar with both of those faces and you've heard from us a lot in the last couple of months, so uh, we're going to dive right in. Uh, the first slide that I have for you or the next slide is just who we are and what we do. It's just a reminder of our vision, our mission and our core values. And the reason this is important to kind of start the presentation off with is that one of the hardest parts of our jobs is when we have to say no to something. When we have to say no, that we can't do something or that something doesn't fall within our mission. So staying mission focused is really important to the department because we love to do everything we can, but unfortunately every once in a while, it just doesn't fall within our mission and we do have to say um, that it's not mission critical. And our next slide is, is one of the most important ones this year, and that's just our organizational structure. And the reason I want to spend a couple of moments on this is because it is a change. This is new. Most of you are familiar with our two tiers, the recreation and the parks um, pillars. But this new middle pillar called operations is a consolidation of the capital division, the marketing division and the business office, which in previous organizational charts just directly reported to the director's office. We're able to facilitate this change in our organizational structure with one of the new positions that we are requesting this year, an operations administrator. And this will help the department balance the responsibilities within our department between the rec and park side. Um, offering internal support. Those are those two little dotted lines that you see. But most importantly, we have been a two-legged stool for so long that this third peg really just gives us the uh, sustainable organizational structure for the future and allows us to be more accountable and um, better organized to deal with the day-to-day needs from an internal operations perspective. The next slide is our department overview from a statistical lens and the power is in the numbers on this side. Obviously, we make a lot of data-driven decisions. Where to put our money? Where does our staff work? The hours that are required to support the programs and the things that we do every day. While we are a very large department and we touch a lot of residents' lives on a daily basis, we only have a hundred and fifty-five full-time positions department-wide, which means we rely heavily on temporary and seasonal workers to get the day-to-day job done. Um, our park system has been booming since COVID. Uh, in the last twelve months, we have had over five million visitors to our trails and our park. That's a hundred and sixty parks, many of which are community parks right down the road from neighborhoods and communities. They were intentionally built that way so residents could get to their parks easily. And then you have our regional parks, which are more structured parks that have um, gatehouses and have entrance fees associated with them, like your Quiet Waters Park, um, your Downs Park, your Fort Smallwood Park. On the recreational side, we have done over seventy thousand, um, we've served over seventy thousand participants in our programs. Again, this is our two aquatic centers, our two golf courses and our two ice rinks. Um, athletics is, is sometimes a little bit misunderstood because we register teams and um, there's teams represent about three thousand uh, individual units, but that's almost fifty thousand participants on an annual basis. So on any given weekend, when you go out to your recreational field, we have hundreds of thousands of people um, participating and watching our athletics uh, during the season. And then last, but certainly not least, in our childcare, uh, we serve almost three thousand children and our fifty-three childcare centers. And we're going to get a little bit more detail on that later. Um, the next slide would not be possible without your support of our twenty-five budget. Uh, these accomplishments, and I'm not going to read through them, are in your budget book on page two forty-nine. Uh, some of the highlights are the capital projects that are coming into uh, operations as well as our ranger training manual and a new ranger school in which in April, we just graduated our fifth class. So we're really proud of the work that we've been able to do with the twenty-five budget. The next slide is kind of the pictorial of what we've been doing. And you will see all your friendly faces in this with some of the wonderful um, ribbon cuttings that we've had as well as events out in the field. So everything from going down in South County with uh, their hot socks and Crafton Park, uh, moving up the county to Glenburne Tree Lighting and Marley Creek Regional Park. Uh, we've had some ribbon cutting uh, throughout the county. We had the Fort Smallwood Comfort Station ribbon cutting. We had the Gork ribbon cutting. We had the McNew Community Gardens ribbon cutting, the Bacon Town ribbon cutting and the um, trails sign dedication. So we have been everywhere and that is the power of what we do is that we serve all residents of Anaronda County uh, geographically throughout the county. The next slide is when we really get down into the details and this is like a summary of our FY twenty-six budget. So I'm a fast talker. If you need more information, please stop me, but our general fund, that very first line, the two point nine million dollars is an eight and, eight point two percent increase. More than half of that increase is related to personal services. What is personal services? Those are those thousand employees that we just talked about, a hundred and fifty-five full-time employees and about eight hundred and fifty um, part-time seasonal employees. Uh, the biggest piece of that is the pay increases on the related benefits. So about a million and a half of that uh, total dollar amount is attributed to pay increases. And then you have your part-time seasonal who also get the cola. So there's money in that number that pays for the cola for a part-time seasonal, which is a huge win for Recreation and Parks because part-time seasonal are valued employees and giving them the cola helps us with retention and recruitment in the long run. Um, the other increases you see on this page under the character line item um, are things like utilities, electricity with all the new amenities coming onboard. Um, our electricity amounts have gone up by about half of a million dollars along with water sewer. Uh, we have to pay those bills in order to keep the lights on and serve uh, the public. Another large increase is our golf managers um, went up by about five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That's their workforce and their maintenance costs as well as their utilities that have gone up. And then lastly, uh, you see an increase at the very bottom of this chart in grants contributions and others for two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred of that is an increase of our joint use agreement with the Board of Education. This is all the fields that we use, all the gyms that we use in order to support our programming. Um, we have historically given them about eight hundred thousand dollars and we're increasing that to a million dollars as part of our agreement. Um, that is things like custodians on um, workers to unlock the gyms and to be present when we have the public in the school facilities. What I really want to focus our time on today is the rest of the percentage, which is about two percent, which represents the new stuff that we're doing in FY twenty-six. So the next slide gives you an overview of our new positions that we are requesting in the uh, general fund budget. These are directly resulting from completion of capital improvement projects. So when we propose a new project and we talk to the council about the cost of building the project, we also quantify what is the operating impact of that project. So when we complete projects, this is when those dots are connected and we ask for the operating side. Um, so the first positions I would talk about are park maintenance. In this budget, we have two um, full-time maintenance worker, two positions and two temp seasonal positions that will support our new parks and amenities coming online. The Pals Park, the Deal Park, the McNew Community Garden, uh, Millersville, Odenton Park and Brooklyn Heights, all coming online in FY twenty-six and need to have a support system so that we can take care of those new amenities once built. Trail staffing, same thing. We have expanded our trail system twenty-seven percent since two thousand and nineteen. That's all over ten miles of trails that have been built. Now that those trails are finally being completed, we've asked for a park ranger and a maintenance worker in order to keep those trails safe and maintained in the future. North Aquatic Center, we've got a capital project to finish the splash pad uh, this time next year. So we have prorated what we think we need to open up that splash pad once it's completed, both in temporary seasonal staff and operating expenses um, that we will incur when it's in operation. Uh, this will also have an offsetting revenue because we will charge to use the splash pad. So once the splash pad becomes operable, we'll have both expenditures and revenues. The next slide is related, but not related to the CIP, and this is just um, new proposed increases or initiatives. We realized that in these uncertain financial times that everybody was kind of asked to look at your revenue sources and do an analysis of what you charge and why you charge it. And one of the fees that we have not um, adjusted in decades is the regional park entrance fee. So this budget proposes increasing the daily fee from six dollars to eight dollars. That means when you drive up to the gatehouse, you would pay eight dollars per vehicle. Or you could buy an annual pass. If you're a county resident, it's, right now it's thirty dollars. Uh, we would increase it to forty dollars. And if you're a non-county resident, you would pay fifty dollars and that lets you come in and out of the park um, uh, as you wish with a sticker without capping how much time or how many times. Uh, this would generate about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of revenue in our operating side. Uh, turf field monitors, we all know that turf fields are in high demand. We built a new turf fields at Southern Run High School. Those have been operational. Um, they are, are accepting the conditions of all the fields at the new high school and we would like to fully program them and we need turf field monitors in order to fully utilize that new amenity. And then lastly, one-time money in the capital equipment line item. Uh, we have some significant needs of aging equipment. In our base budget, we have um a, a, a little bit of money and we've asked for an increase of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We see this as a one-time ask so that we can take care of some uh, older equipment that needs to be replaced in order to make uh, us more efficient. The next slide is just another pictorial of how busy we've been this year. So between our camps and our programming, our special events, bringing new amenities online, um, our numerous public engagement um, uh, efforts, concerts in the parks and on the trails and just overall facility use, uh, we have been extremely busy. We used to joke that we'd have peak season in the spring and summer, but now all year long is really peak. Uh, we see people coming out to our programs and our facilities on a regular basis consistently throughout the year. And again, none of this would be possible without our operating budget. The next slide dives into our childcare. Uh, we currently operate in fifty-three locations for uh, morning and afternoon programs. We have the South County Pre-K Program and we offer summer camps in these locations as part of our summer camp uh, uh, programs. This year, we're asking for a new child enrichment center at Van Bocklen Elementary School and we're expanding the hours of operation of the enrichment centers um, in order to be open an extra half an hour. In order to balance that, we are also proposing a fee increase of the monthly fees from uh, two or by two, twenty-five dollars a month to four hundred and sixty dollars a month. That'll generate a little over four hundred thousand dollars. We've implemented a new non-refundable registration fee um, that helps us monitor and keep track of those that are registering. Um, and then we've also implemented a early dismissal surcharge of ten dollars a day. This is still the best bang for your buck in the county on early dismissal days to have childcare. You can see all of the details uh, of childcare on page two hundred and fifty-six. Um, the biggest challenge in childcare has been balancing the affordable childcare services um, and a sustainable fund management with the growing demands that we have seen um, throughout the years uh, in the childcare industry. So that concludes our operating budget presentation. I am happy to answer any questions you might have on the operating side before we move into the capital side.
So um, the Child Enrichment Center at Van Bocklen, can you tell us what the, what is different with a Child Enrichment Center as opposed to a regular childcare?
Absolutely. So Child Enrichment Centers are specifically placed in community or Title I schools because they are affordable childcare centers. We only charge five dollars a month to participate in that childcare. So they do not pay the uh, four hundred and sixty dollars a month that we are proposing. If you remember, last year we pulled all of the enrichment centers out of the childcare fund and we put them into the general fund um, as general fund programs because they are not self-sustaining programs.
Okay. And how many child enrichment centers do we have? And how many child enrichment centers do we have?
So, I believe we have Tammy here. And she's probably going to text me the answer. But last year, I think we moved seven child enrichment centers over to the general fund. So, I think this would be our eighth, this would be our eighth child enrichment center over. And the biggest thing is, is that they would close earlier than all the rest of the childcare. So, one of the complaints about the participants in the child enrichment centers were that while they appreciate not paying the full amount, they were frustrated in the fact that they also didn't get the full service. So, we will be extending the hours of operation so that working parents can participate in the centers at the same amount of hours.
So, those, so all the, the participants at the child enrichment centers only paid five dollars a month. Is that for all participants or is there a, is there an income? Is there a qualification for it that they have to qualify to, to pay that? Or is it just open to anyone at that school?
So, it is open to anyone at that school. Those schools have been identified as schools of need because of their geographical and economical demographics. So, we do not do any income-based analysis on participation. They are typically Title I schools or community schools in, in needs defined. And the reason we're able to offer those centers for such a discounted cost is because we also get a grant from the schools in order to provide those services.
Okay. Thank you.
And I see Tammy's online. If I said anything wrong, Tammy, or if I need a better statistic.
So, all right. Are there any other questions on the operating budget? Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I ask my question, I just need to make sure I disclose and I will be filing the appropriate paperwork. It's also on my financial disclosure. But I, my father is on the Board of Directors for the London Town Foundation. And actually, one of my sons is employed for summer employment by the London Town Foundation. And so, I, that is one of the historical parks that Anaronda County owns. London Foundation, London Town Foundation operates it. So, wanted to make sure I put that out there for the audible public record. And like I said, I'll make sure I get the correct form filed today. I, my question is completely unrelated to everything I just said. And it is, there have been some cases at some of our parks countywide. I know Bell Branch Park in Crofton in particular, or maybe that actually is technically Davinsonville where that zip code line is, I'm not a hundred percent sure. They have been vandalized with the, you know, in the past with the copper wiring being taken out. Is, are there, is that something being addressed through the operational side of the house? Or if there's something on the capital side that you're going to talk about, please feel free to tell me to wait. But I was just curious if you could talk about what we're doing as a county, as a department to just try and mitigate some of that. Because it is expensive and obviously frustrating to the users when the lights aren't operable and they can't use their fields, so.
Absolutely. So, the answer is, is that we are tackling this issue on both sides of the house, both the operating and capital. Ms. Matthews has the pleasure of being in charge of when these things happen because they're often after hours or weekends when we get the call from our local police department. So, Erica, would you like to share a little bit about how we are tackling this ongoing problem?
Good morning. Erica Matthews, Deputy Director, Anaronda County Recreation and Parks. We are in constant communication right now with Anaronda County Police Department. They have been very helpful in leading this investigation. And I don't want to give away too much about what's going on with the investigation. Where we are paying for this is actually out of our capital budget under our facility lighting. That's where we're making the payments. We have reviewed our specifications to make sure that there's no copper in any of our new lights, which is our standard. We're just double checking that that's actually what's being implemented out there. And then we are currently looking into some other security devices that hopefully will be deployed this month.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any further questions? Looking, don't see any hands. All right, on to capital.
Okay. So, the next slide brings us up to the capital projects. We're going to be going over the P-class projects today. And we're going to dive a little bit into details, but we're also here to answer any of the questions you might have as we go through this. It starts on page one oh-two of your capital budget book, if you want to follow along in your capital budget book or on your highlighter report. And so, the first slide that I have here is just our P-class overview. And this just kind of gives you an idea of where we are on the capital side. We have fifty-three capital projects, but we're only going to be talking about thirty-four today. The capital project is, or capital budget is approximately forty-six point nine eight million dollars. As you will notice, this is significantly lower than the previous two fiscal years, but it's still a very healthy request that will allow the department to continue to maintain, expand, and operate a very diverse recreational system. Our budget request reflects the current schedules and cost estimates as we work in partnership with DPW. As good fiscal stewards, we continue to seek non-county funding whenever possible. This includes grants or private partnerships. We're not afraid to beg for money in order to keep projects moving forward. This year's funding from the state and the federal government has declined significantly. We have done a lot of outreach to our elected officials in trying to secure as much money as we can in grant funding. So, you see about five two point two nine million dollars or eleven percent of our overall capital budget is covered by grants. The biggest success that we've had in securing a long-term grant was working with the local Development Council on the West County Swim Center and getting a commitment of future funding towards that project. We also continue to solicit other outside funding partners or funding sources. And we're pursuing another TAP grant to support trail development in FY twenty-seven. All of those funds will be recognized in a future budget. I want to remind the council that as we go through our presentation, that our out-year budgets always fluctuate. Whenever we move from feasibility or ideas to design costs, we then get a better construction number. So, when you see projects that have variance, it's not really that we're doing anything more or different. It's just the number becomes fine-tuned as we go through the process. We've also extended all of our multi-year projects into the year thirty-one. So, those will also have slides today for you as well. The good news is, is that while budgets have increased a lot over the last three years, we are now experiencing a little bit of savings when the actual project costs come to the county. So, we go out to bid and we get contractor or we get the contracts back in. Things like Tangle Springs where the bid actually came back eight hundred thousand dollars less than what we anticipated. So, it's all part of the process and we're appreciative of the work that gets done behind the scenes to make that sell. So, where does our money go? We put our money directly where the public tells us to. We have held over twenty public meetings in the last calendar year. We've conducted numerous surveys and we have focused a lot on the community feedback through these online surveys, as well as having a lot of stakeholder groups that continue to help us with the process. And then most importantly, those stakeholders groups are happening earlier in the process so that the feedback is heard from the public or from the stakeholders before we start the planning process. To be more financially responsible and efforts to make our capital program a little bit more sustainable, we've now established three themes or priorities to help us make these decisions. And I'm going to dive a little bit into them just so that you understand our thought process. The next slide is theme one, which is completing what we started. And these are some really great charts. I'm not going to read them, but what I want this, your takeaway to be is that this budget is a very construction-heavy budget. More than eighty percent of the funding that has been allocated is going into construction. We want to focus in on the projects that are currently in process and try to get them as close to completion as we can so we don't lose the momentum that we have in the project. Completing the, the completion of the project is obviously a direct indicator of us being successful and that doing that in a timely fashion is something that we strive to do. This is the second year of having a robust construction budget that more than, I guess, fourteen of our projects are currently in construction and that totals up to a large percentage of what we are presenting to you today. Theme two is really, is the implementation of our long-range plans and our master plans. So, we work on making sure that we are doing what our plans have given us the structure to do. You've heard the department talk about our LPPIP and how it serves as a guide for park development, program improvements, and land preservation in Anaronda County. That LPPIP is driven by public input. So, this is a key driver of how we select and we complete the projects and what the priority of those projects are. It includes new fields, new rec centers, continued efforts in order to offer indoor recreation such as swimming and indoor tennis, track and field complexes, the things that maybe we don't have now that the public has identified in the process as being a need. In addition to the LPPIP, we also work to complete our longstanding department master plans, such as the Fort Smallwood and the regional trail planning. And we also are working towards implementing, implementing our small area plans, our community plans, such as the community parks identified in the Odington Town Center and the completion of the community, the Deal Community Park. Theme three is environmental stewardship. As one of the largest land managers in the county, we need to be leaders in this area. We continue to prioritize and protect and restore our shorelines. This year, we've begun partnering with the Resiliency Authority of Annapolis and Anaronda County on several of our projects to take, or to fully utilize their technical knowledge as well as their fundraising ability to help us complete projects that are impacted by climate change and sea rise, sea level rises. We're also working with them to complete the Beverly Triton and the Jonas Green Shoreline projects. We're focusing on acquiring more lands for conservation. The green space is slowly diminishing in Anaronda County and it's important that, that we preserve as much as we can. We are favoring the reuse and the rehabilitation over new development. Examples are what we do in Park Reno to beautify the parks that we already have, the Edgewater Community Center and the revitalization of a big box store, the Deep Run Recreational Center and the repurposing of a county-owned building. And then the renovation of existing parks to give them new uses or expand their uses. And we also like to provide opportunities to experience nature, especially in areas that have limited green space, such as the expansion of Southern Danza, the improvements that we're making at Bacon Ridge, the development of Marley Creek, the Marley Regional Park, and the McNew Community Gardens to connect people with nature, get them off of their electronics and out into nature. So, with that said, that gives you a better understanding of how we came up with all these projects that we're going to dive into. We're going to give you as much or as little detail as you want per project. So, Bruce is going to run us through project by project, give you an update of the status of the project, as well as highlight any changes that we might have in the project as part of this budget request. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce.
I'm Bruce Bruci, Chief of Planning and Construction with the Department of Recreation and Parks. Good morning. First project is P three seven two triple zero, the South Shore Trail. This fourteen-mile trail project is moving towards completion. Phase two is presently under construction. Phases three and four are various phases of design. Our request for FY twenty-six is for additional design funding or land right-of-way funding for phase four and will include funding to start the planning and design of the Maryland Route Three Crossing. Next is the WBNA Trail, P three nine three six hundred. The good news is with the opening of the bridge over the Patuxent River on Friday, this trail is essentially complete. The one remaining project on this is improvements at the Wall Chapel Road Crossing. So, Recreation Parks is reducing our program requests this year. The full construction funding is, has been approved and fulfilled and will require no out-year budget requests.
There we go. Sorry about that. Greenways, Parkland, and Open Space, P four hundred two hundred. This project allows us to acquire new property to support recreational and conservation goals. This year, we acquired twenty-nine point one six acres to expand the Patuxent River Greenway. We added thirteen point eight acres off a race road to be used for the West County Swim Center. And we acquired two more acres to expand Jug Bay. Currently in process, we have twenty-seven acres at Salt Works and a two hundred and forty point eight acres expansion of the Magathie Greenway. Our twenty-sixth request is two point six six million dollars with one point four one three awarded from program Open Space. We've allocated three years for three million for each of the out-years and then will also be supplemented with program Open Space.
Next is our facility lighting program, P four four five eight hundred. I won't read all the details on the slides here, but this is one of our ongoing multi-year countywide projects. This one addresses the repair, replacement, and installation of lighting systems on courts and athletic fields around the county. The out-year requests remain level and this extends the program through FY thirty-one. Next is P four five two five hundred, Recreation and Parks Planning. This is our incubator. This is where projects are studied, feasibility analyses are conducted. Almost every project that we're talking about here today began its life in the incubator of P four five two five hundred. You can see listed some of the, the projects that were studies once and have turned into projects now. For FY twenty-six, we are looking at additional studies for the expansion of the Bachman Sports Complex, for the start of a Lakeshore Trail system. We're reopening the South Central County State Skate Park Study, looking at locations for skate parks in South County. And we're also starting to work on the twenty twenty-seven LPP RP. Next is P four five seven triple zero, School Outdoor Recreation Facilities. Again, this is an ongoing multi-year project. This one is, is addressing improvements or repairs at recreational facilities that are located on Board of Education properties. You can see what we completed in twenty-five. Our twenty-sixth request includes projects at Annapolis Middle School and Marley Middle School. The program is continued then at a level all the way through FY thirty-one. Next is P four six eight seven hundred, Stream Shoreline Erosion Control. Have four major projects underway, as you see here. And we also have two additional projects that we're doing in partnership with the Resilience Authority. The, the Lake Waterford Dredging Project that you see listed here is actually out for construction bids. That project will begin this summer. And the Jonas and Ann Catherine Green Shoreline Project, the Resilience Authority has now received proposals from design firms. So, those projects are moving forward.
I forgot, I'm on Park Reno. This is my favorite project. So, P four five nine or four seven nine eight hundred. So, this is an ongoing multi-year project. And, and I often say this is the best bang for our buck. The money that goes in here helps us keep up with all of the parks and all of the amenities that we're responsible for taking care of. Of course, those parks and amenities are getting older and they're getting more use than ever. So, the list is growing of things that are either broken or aged or need attention. The projects in twenty-six include things like a new roof on Deep Run, a repair of the pond at Downs Park, a carport to house our heavy equipment and protect the investments we've made in equipment, making sure that our playgrounds are safe and can fully be utilized with new shade structures and rubber surfaces, as well as like repairs to the southern maintenance and playgrounds. It's pretty much our catch-all account. Any unsupported requests that come in, that's not a new project or hasn't been talked about anywhere else, whether it comes from a constituent concern, a request from a committee, from one of, from one of you as the elected official, we use this account to make that happen. So, as we acquire more properties and we build more parks, the demand on this account becomes more and more. I always say that if we can ever find extra coins in the couch cushion, this is one of the best places to put it because this is where we're able to serve the most amenities with the least amount of money. Thanks so much.
Next is P five oh four one hundred, the Broadneck Peninsula Trail. This trail is also nearing its completion. The three phases are still in The three phases are still in construction. Phase three from Baydale Drive to Anaronda Community College is in construction and phases one B and five, which are on East College Parkway and take us into Sandy Point State Park, are also in construction. The FY twenty six budget request is focused on phases one B and five where construction efforts encountered a bunch of unsuitable soils that cost a lot of money to, to overcome. Next is P five oh nine one hundred, Facility Irrigation. Again, an ongoing countywide program. This is for installing and repairing wells and maintaining and installing field irrigation systems throughout our parks. This year's fund request extends the request through FY thirty one. Next is P five three five nine hundred, Fort Smallwood Park. Happy to report that as we continue to, to make progress on the overall master plan, the shoreline work has all been completed and in fact, this year, the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association named Fort Smallwood Park as one of the United States Best Restored Shorelines. Our focus has been on the buildings in the park. We opened, completed and opened the new beachfront comfort station and concession stand earlier this year. Park staff is literally today moving into the newly completed park maintenance building. We are in permitting for the Visitor Center, which is actually a rehabilitation of the historic Barracks Building that will become the park's visitor center. And FY twenty six, we will complete the construction on those two projects and move into design of the final building project, which is the historic reservation, historic renovation of Battery Hart Shore. Next is P five six one seven hundred, Turf Fields in Regional Parks. Our FY twenty six is focused on replacing the synthetic turf field at the Bates Athletic Complex for the Annapolis Boys and Girls Club. P five six five one hundred is Northwest Area Park Improvements. That is actually the way we represent funding from the Video Lottery Impact Aid. We see the two projects that we've completed this year at Mathiastown Harmon's Park and our second track and field complex at Lindale Middle School. Our FY twenty six is for the Local Development Council to fund the West County Swim Center project. P five six seven four hundred, Water Access Facilities. Again, a multi-year project. You can see a number of the projects that are underway. We're under construction at Homport and Spriggs Farm on new gate systems. We're under design at Deal Wharf and Valentine Creek for improvements there. Our FY twenty six program continues many of those. More ADA access electronic gate at Jack Creek Park and additional renovation at Deal Wharf and Valentine Creek and then moving on to Shadyside Wharf. P five seven zero three hundred is Beverly Triton Nature Park. There's no change in the program and the only work that we have remaining in the park proper is some remedial stormwater management work left over from when we added the new comfort station and gatehouse and, and parking improvements. We're also working with the Resilience Authority to complete phase two of Beverly Triton's Shoreline Project, which is a significant project. P five seven three two hundred is, is labeled Hot Sox Park Improvements. Obviously, Hot Sox Park, the, the baseball field has been complete. We're now focused on renovating Mr. Wilson's House as you see in the photograph there. The construction is actually just starting on that restoration work. Our FY twenty six is based on updated cost estimates and costing and cost for construction management and inspection during construction. P five seven three three hundred is the Cars Wharf Project. The renovation of the overwater part of the project was previously completed. We're finalizing the design of the reduced parking improvements and designing the living shoreline. The request is for the final engineering design and permitting of that living shoreline, which will replace a failing bulkhead there on the Road River. Our out-year request will be to fund the construction of that living shoreline. P five seven six three hundred is the Glen Burnie Ice Rink. That project is now closed out and this returns previously budgeted funds. P five seven eight nine hundred, Parks and Trails Resurfacing Countywide. We try and do about a full mile of trail in one of our regional parks each year as well as making improvements or repairs and a lot of emergency and culvert repairs that happen. Our request is level across the out-years and extends through FY thirty one. Brooklyn Park Community Center, P five seven nine triple zero. This project actually has two phases. The first is the renovation and new amenities being added to Brooklyn Heights Park. That project is almost complete. We, we hope to accept that park before the month of June back into our park system. And design is underway on the Brooklyn Community Center, which will sit at the entrance of that park. The FY twenty six request is to provide funding for the construction of the community center.
West County Swim Center, P five seven nine nine zero zero. The department continues to make progress on this project as the need for the third aquatic center remains. The scope of the project remains unchanged. It has been in the LPPRP twice. The general feedback from the survey last year was positive and it's supported by the Board of Education and local swim clubs. The current pools remain at capacity and while we have been discussing a pool at West County, the requests for pools in South County, Odington and Crofton have continued to rise. The biggest challenge we faced was location and that has been resolved. The aquatic center will be located on Race the Road. The county has completed a preliminary test fit of the center on the designated property and that's shown on the left side of the slide. The design for the building is about thirty percent complete. We have begun resumed, we have resumed design based upon this new location. Once we get a little further in the design, we will have additional public engagement. Current funding will be used to complete the design permitting, hire the CMI, and if possible, begin some of the site work to prepare the location for the building and the parking lot. As we discussed previously, we have asked the LDC to help fund the completion of this project. The LDC has committed to partnering with the county for the redevelopment, I'm sorry, for the development of the West County Swim Center. The LDC has recommended that the Department of Recreation and Parks repurpose five hundred thousand dollars of funding awarded in fiscal twenty five for the West County Swim Center project and will make a recommendation on the future multi-year commitment for the project during the fiscal twenty seven funding cycle. The final cost will be determined during the design phases and the remainder of the construction funding will be requested in the out-years. We recognize that this is a large investment and we're asking to complete for this project, so we're going to split the construction dollars over multiple years. Splitting the funding over several years allows the project to proceed with current funding and additional fundings being requested as needed. This plan reflects completing the construction in phases to allow the project's total cost to better fit in the county's overall budget.
Next is P five eight four three hundred, ADA Compliance Implementation. This project is to address barriers to access in all of our parks and facilities and continues until we've achieved full compliance. In, in the past year, we made improvements at the Andover Equestrian Center, at Botkin Park, Downs and Quiet Waters Park and at Jug Bay Wetland Sanctuary. We expect to touch the Swim Center and a number of other parks in FY twenty six. Our request continues this program through FY twenty seven. P five eight four six hundred is the Quiet Waters Park Rehabilitation. The list of projects at Quiet Waters seems to get longer each year, but we, you see the list of projects that we completed in, in FY twenty five, including projects that are in design. The renovation of the Visitor Center and Blue Heron Center should be in construction by the end of this year. The master plan for the Quiet Waters Retreat Property is just wrapping up. We expect a public meeting in the next month or so to, to present that master plan to the public and we'll be moving that project into design. The FY twenty six request is for the engineering design of the retreat expansion and for a new park maintenance building. We're also assessing the condition of the ice rink. Out-year requests are expected to be for the construction of improvements on the retreat property and for the new maintenance building. P five eight seven nine hundred is Tanyard Springs Park. New park, this is a new park on Tanyard Springs Lane at Heritage Crossing. It's presently under construction and is expected to be complete by November. The FY twenty six budget returns previously approved project funding that was not needed. P five eight eight triple zero, Bacon Ridge Natural Area. The improvements to the Severn Chapel area off of Severn Chapel Road, the construction is about to begin. The public meeting to, on that construction is June the eighteenth. Invite you to join the Department of Public Works as they review the planned construction there. Our FY twenty six request reflects the updated estimate for design and initial preservation construction on the historic farmstead portion of the park. P five eight eight one hundred is South Shore Park. There's no change in the program. The FY twenty six request is for design and initial site construction. FY twenty seven request will be for construction. Crowesville Memorial Park, P five eight eight four hundred. The county recently completed the master plan. The FY twenty six request that you see here reflects both a state grant and the FY twenty seven request is for utility improvements on the campus. P five nine one triple zero, Lake Waterford Park Improvements. The design is underway on these improvements which add active and adaptive recreation components to the existing park. There is no change in the program. The, our FY twenty six budget request is to fund the, is to fund the construction of those improvements. P five nine two five hundred is the Davidsonville Recreation Center. This work is expected to include expanded parking, new and or renovated building construction, pathways, park amenities, utility upgrades. We are just starting the design on this project. Our FY twenty six is for, budget request is for engineering, final design, permitting and the start of construction and out-year requests will be based on current estimates for that construction.
Edgewater Regional Recreation Center Improvements, P five nine two six hundred. The vision for the Edgewater Community Recreation Center is to transform this former abandoned commercial site into a vibrant and welcoming hub where people of all ages can come together to connect, learn, relax and play. The Department of Recreation and Parks continues to make progress on the development of the Edgewater Rec Center. The department is working with the Resilience Authority and the Department of Public Works to complete this project. The partnership with the Resilience Authority will help achieve the goal of resiliency through redevelopment as the center will provide opportunities for recreation, education and sustainability-driven initiatives. This contract is currently out to bid. The fiscal twenty six request is for the balance of the money needed to complete these renovations. And again, the department would like to thank the Resilience Authority for all of their support and help throughout our capital budgets. We've mentioned them a couple of times, so we need to thank them as well as our partners over at DPW.
The last of the previously funded projects is P five nine two seven hundred, Marley Creek Regional Park. FY twenty six request is for continued engineering design of this new Glen Burnie area of regional park. We have a stakeholders group selection process underway and, and Public Works is just engaging our master plan consultant. So the work will begin in earnest on this project in the coming months.
That now brings us to what we consider our new project request in FY twenty six. And we have three projects that are under this category, even though they're labeled new request. The projects themselves are not new and we have been talking to the council and the county about these projects in prior budget presentations. We've actively engaged the residents and we've received community input on all three of these projects. And they all three impact existing park properties. The requests are needed to fund the continued design and construction of these projects. And Bruce will dive into a little bit of detail on each one of them and we'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
The first is P five nine three eight hundred, Old Mill Area Park Improvements. Let me first explain the name because back when this was a planning project at P four five two, this, this, these two parks, Arden on the Severn and Waterberry Parks, were located in the Old Mill High School feeder system. We didn't move the parks. They changed the high school feeder system. So technically, these two parks are now in the Severn Run High School feeder system. These projects are both very much alike. They both need field improvements, a lot of expanded parking, storage spaces, landscape enhancements, accessible pathways to get people in and out of the fields. We, as the director said, we studied these two parks previously and have met with the stakeholders. The FY twenty six allows us to begin the design of these two projects. P five nine three nine hundred is improvements to South River Farm Park. Again, we completed the revised master plan, working with a very energetic stakeholders group. The FY twenty six request is for continued engineering and design work to implement the elements of the master plan. Our out-year request will request construction funding, we expect in FY twenty seven. And last but not least, P five nine four triple zero, the expansion of Severn Danza Park. Again, we had previously studied this expansion of thirty acres into, that are adjacent to Severn Danza that the county acquired a couple of years ago. The FY twenty six request is for engineering and design of that expansion to pick up on those master plan elements and move forward. Our out-year request will be for construction funding for those improvements.
And that concludes our presentation on the Capitol side. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Bickerd.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a great presentation. It looks really good. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. I did not see any mention of the Corcoran Comfort Station Concession Stand. That project has been incredibly delayed and my community is beyond frustrated with the project. I'm really thinking it should have been built by now. So do we have an update on that?
Sure. So I'm going to turn it over to Erica to give you the update. I know Corcoran was part of our park renovation project. That's how it was paid and it was also a state grant. So that would have been in a previous approved appropriation. That's why you didn't see a specific page on it in our presentation. But Erica, do you have an update on that project?
Yep, we are wrapping up the grading permit right now. And then I've been told that this project should go out to bid in the next month or two to get us to work completion.
So my user group was told that there were delays with health department permits for the kitchen equipment inside the concession stand part of the building, which just seemed to be a bit premature of actually just getting the building built. So I know they're very frustrated. If, I would appreciate if, if those of us that were instrumental in getting the funding could be brought up to speed, that would be great. Madam Chair, can I continue asking a few questions?
Yes, go ahead.
And then I'm super excited to see Severn Danza expansion. I am still concerned that there are no field additions in that project. I know the, the user groups, the different, uh, Severn Athletic Club that has the permit there is always feeling pinched for fields, whether it's soccer or softball or, or little league. Um, we did purchase thirty acres. So when, I know I've shared this with you. I, I think when the community starts to be involved in getting, seeing the public conversations about the expansion, that they're going to be surprised that there isn't any additional fields being added to that park.
So, um, I know you and I've had several conversations about the Severn Danza, uh, project and we've tried our best to communicate both through the athletic associations and to the general public. Um, the dialogue of when it was first purchased, it was purchased to relocate the existing fields because the school was going to go where the existing fields are today. And so now there's this expectation that there will be additional fields, but that wasn't the initial intent. It was always to move the existing fields to a different area to accommodate the school. So what we have done is some extensive public outreach, um, on this project. And, um, I believe we've shared the results of that public outreach, but we have asked through survey, uh, and through communications with the community, uh, the public, what they would like to see there. And surprisingly, fields was not the number one response. I think that there was a larger desire to have more green space and natural areas. And so, uh, going back to the priority of public feedback, I do agree that there might be a handful of individuals that have been lobbying for existing fields or more fields, uh, or increased demand in fields. And we continue to work with that group to try to find them other fields such as moving them to underutilized fields in order to accommodate the field request. So we're trying to balance that, that public demand, both for more fields and more natural space. Um, Erica, I know that you and I talked a little bit about the results of the survey. Do you want to elaborate on that a little bit or did I cover it enough?
You got it, you got it covered. Um, and part of the conversation now is as we moved into design, we've gotten a little bit smarter on the property. There are a lot of environmental features that are on the property, um, some things that we're a little bit concerned about. We do want to maintain some of that forest cover because that's also an important driver in the LPPRP, our green infrastructure plan. So there are some competing, uh, needs on this property. And to Jessica's point, we are relying on the latest public engagement and public surveys to sort of help guide that conversation.
Thank you. I, I, I just, I want to be clear. There, there's no school going on that park and there's no school in the C I, B O E, C I P for a, an additional school. Um, but I, I'm just representing my community. So when it all comes together, hopefully simultaneously, we are accommodating, um, youth athletics in various, um, parks and, and maintaining and, and making sure there's fields that have lights and fields that are adequately, adequately maintained if they're not going to be additional fields at Severn Danza. Um, we are, you know, I'm super excited about the Marley Creek Regional, uh, Park, which, you know, seventy acres of, of forest that I'm excited that, uh, we're going to be bringing online in this community as well. So I just, I think it's important to listen to the community and I just hope we can accommodate the, all of the competing needs in various ways. Um, I, I would, I know you've offered to, to walk the property and I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that, um, when we're not spending hours in budget briefings, but, um, hopefully this summer we can walk the property and see what the, the plan is, how the plan's coming together at Severn Danza. So thank you for those answers.
Um, this led better.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know my computer's a little elevated, so it's hard to see my flag. Um, thank you for the great presentation. As always, uh, you are very, very thorough, which is appreciated. Um, the, I have a couple of questions, if the chair can indulge me to just kind of go rapid fire one to the other. Thank you. Um, for the Edgewater Rec Center, would it be more appropriate as far as timelines or future public meetings, um, whether or not the amenities are set in stone or if there's still going to be meetings about those? Would it be better to engage with the resiliency authority at this point about that? Or is it better to ask here? I just don't want to miss my opportunity. Um, so feel free to redirect me if that's more appropriate. Um, but I don't want to have this opportunity pass me by, by accident.
Okay, I, I'll take that one Jess. Uh, Erica Matthews, Deputy Director, Anarundel County Recreation and Parks. Uh, the community is going to get another opportunity to weigh in on this project. Um, where we are right now, it's a partnership between us and the resilience authority. The resilience authority has placed the project out for bid. One of the elements of the bid that the teams have to propose is public engagement. Um, there are some elements of the project that, you know, we've wanted to be multi-generational, we've heard pickleball, we've heard skate park, we've heard all these things. But we've done about three different surveys in this local area on several different topics and several different ideas that we think that with the latest feedback and working with the new team, we can come up with another floor plan that we think will be a lot more pleasing to the community. There will, again, once we get that all squared away, we will come back to the community and have another public meeting. We are exploring, if you notice, there was a study reference for South County Skate Park. So we have, we're working through some things on that and I don't want to get ahead of myself on that, but there will be some additional engagement about a South County Skate Park very soon.
Wonderful. Thank you for the information. I appreciate it. It's very helpful. Um, and then switching gears to another project that, um, didn't come up in your overview, probably because it's essentially closed out, but it hasn't opened yet, um, which is Deal Park. Um, there have been, obviously, the community is both excited about this and also at this point, because of some delays and finally opening, a little bit of frustration. Um, I know I've received some constituent inquiries about some ponding issues that are taking place. Um, there's been some concerns about ingress and egress access for some, for a business that's nearby. Um, I was just hoping that you could maybe give us an idea of where we are on those issues and if, if you do have a timeline for resolving and, and getting the park opened. Um, and get, let's get users in there.
All right, Erica Matthews again for Reckon Parks. Our goal is to have this project completed this summer. And some of the, we are aware of some of the concerns with the ingress and egress and those are with the Office of Law right now, so I can't really discuss that.
Understood. Uh, could you speak to the ponding at all that, um, that, that's from the, I think it's from, correct me if I'm wrong, but stormwater possibly?
All right, I'm going to defer that question to Bruce because Bruce has been out there a little bit more frequently than I have and he can provide you an update.
And I, we, I have spoken to Bruce through my office and I know that you've been quite responsive to the inquiries I've made and I really do appreciate it.
Yeah, the, uh, construction has, again, Bruce Bruch, Chief of Planning and Construction. The, uh, construction has been impacted by the, the wet spring and the fact that we've got wetlands in the middle of that park and it's, it's a very low site. So the contractor has gotten bogged down, literally and figuratively, uh, with some, some onsite water. Part of the issue there also relates to the state right away along Deal Churchton Road and, and how the stormwater was being handled out there while we waited for the state to, to finalize the permit. Those, those issues are all being addressed now and, and we're steaming towards completion.
All right, so the state permit's not finalized yet, but they are actively in process. Would that be correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you.
So, um, very good news that the Petuxent Trail Bridge is finally open. That has been quite a star-crossed project and, um, we will always say better late than never. Um, I haven't been out there yet. It just opened, I think, Friday. And so I want to get out there and take a look, but we're very glad that that is open. And as you know, I'm always excited to hear about, um, skate park opportunities that, that I want to continue with that. We've got a wonderful, um, group of residents, activists who are really pushing and being very helpful in us looking for ways to expand our skate parks. And so, um, I look forward to, to many more of those. I'm coming to you with more land, more locations where I think we could put that in and serve our communities, so. All right, any other questions for our Parks, Parks and Rec team? All right, thank you all very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Have a great, uh, rest of the afternoon. Get outside, it's beautiful.
Thank you, Naomi.
So, all right, is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? Anyone, anyone? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Oh, so a second? Somebody say second? Okay.
Second.
All in favor? I, I closed. Okay, motion carries. County Council is adjourned until Wednesday, May twenty first, twenty twenty five at seven PM, when we will meet for the second public hearing on the FY twenty six budget in person at Arundel High School. We'll see everyone tomorrow. Have a good day.